Well, not you, but you, Mr. Bragg, you're the one who threw out the seat. He switched his seat.
I think that every Sunday I move around Texas.
That would drive my mother insane. That would drive her insane.
I think joy in this room.
You've just been troublemaker all your life.
Oh, you have enjoyed audio.
Teacher appreciation week.
It's on. It's Kathy and.
Adrienne. Oh, is yours on?
Our computer's on.
Oh, what a.
Well, here, take this one.
Yeah, there's another one.
This is mine.
Oh, that makes it.
That was easy to get everyone quiet. Good morning. Board members, are we ready? And are y'all ready? Thank you. Great. Well, thank you all. Welcome to the May State Board of Education meeting. It's an exciting month, an exciting week. Teacher Appreciation Week. Can't wait to hear more from Ms. Alom later today, but really, truly glad to celebrate teachers this week always, but particularly in May when it's a very busy time of year. I know there's so many in this agency who are teachers or have been teachers as well, and hope they feel celebrated in this. Thank you all for coming today. We will start first.
Thank you.
Loud reviews.
With a moment of silence. We do have two board members, Adrian and Ms. Rollins, on, Ms. Woods and Ms. Vaughn's on Zoom. Can you all hear us today? We'll make sure they're on. But thank you. We will start with a moment of silence.
A better.
Yes.
Thank you. It's always exciting to start meetings with awards, and we have three amazing teachers. I was privileged to be at two of your ceremonies, and it's just awesome to see teachers celebrated, and particularly awesome when you have no idea that it's coming, and there's a big rewards attached. So, we're so thankful that y'all were able to come today to share with us, and I'll pass it on to Ms. Saracini.
Good morning, Carly Saracini. And you know, someone said, Carly, did you plan this just right? This is Teacher Appreciation Week. No, it just felt perfect, but we like to think so. And today, we get to celebrate teachers, and this is one of the highest honors that we get to celebrate today, and that is the Milken Award winners. And usually, Milken gives one award per state per year, and so today, we're going to get to celebrate three. We have not had three Milken Award winners in the state at one time since 2001. That is a long time. And so, for us to be able to have kicked off the season in the fall with these three award winners, it's just exciting, and it says so much about our candidates and the quality of our teachers here in Arkansas. And so, without further ado, we're going to start, and we're going to recognize the first one, and that's Andrew Harrison. He is a secondary social studies teacher at Mayflower with nine years of teaching experience. He earned his educator licensure through RR Pep that we support here at Desi, and has a bachelor's degree from Arkansas Tech University. As a Mayflower graduate, that Grow Your Own model that we keep talking about, Andrew is a product of the very community he now serves. He leads by example and is always willing to go above and beyond to grow as an educator. His principal, Mr. Slow, comments, Coach Harrison is an exemplary educator in many regards. He is a lead learner, willing to try new strategies in his classroom, and is reflective. Coach Harrison is also committed to student learning and clearly understands the connection between his instructional choices and student outcomes. And so, I get the great pleasure of introducing Andrew Harrison.
Still surreal. From the day that the Milken Foundation presented the award until now, I feel very blessed and honored, and I'm very fortunate to work with the staff and the students that I do each and every day at Mayflower High School. It's just surreal, and like I said, it's without the support that I have from my colleagues and the students, I wouldn't be here today.
Now, we're going to get a picture with everyone, but I'm going to go on with the other two. Thank you. So, our second one we're going to recognize today is Ashley Post. She is an ELA teacher at Greenbrier Middle School. With six years of teaching experience, she has a BSN Elementary Ed from Arkansas Tech University. Ashley's remarkable ability to pivot and cater to the unique educational and behavioral needs of each student is significant. Factor in the continuously growing performance of her students. Through detailed and diligent lesson plans, she works with special education teachers to ensure the curriculum is accessible and challenging for all learners. Her inclusive strategies are used throughout Greenbrier Middle School. Her assistant principal says, wherever Ashley is and whomever she is leading, she will make an impact. Her students perform at high levels, and we are super proud of the work she and her students have achieved. Ashley Post is another Milken Award winner this year for the state of Arkansas.
So exciting. Just, I'll start with thank you for having us here. Just like he said, this is surreal. I feel like it's all a dream. Since the day that it happened, I've had people say, I was there, and I hardly can even remember because it was so exciting. But I think it's really easy to kind of get in your bubble of your own school, and I'm just really excited for this platform to give me the opportunity, not only to impact my school and my students, and hopefully mentor new teachers, but also hopefully impact the state. So, I'm really excited, and I appreciate y'all having us here. Thank you.
And our last one that we will recognize today is Michael Tapeby, and I said that correct. He is a sixth and seventh grade math and computer science teacher at Hillstone Middle School in Springdale School District. With eight years of teaching experience, he earned an MAT, which is a non-traditional route as well, from UA Favel. Michael thrives when it comes to sparking his young learners' interest into STEM. His passion for creating exciting, authentic, project-based learning experiences plays a pivotal role in the success of his sixth and seventh grade students. Michael is exceptionally skilled at connecting mathematical concepts with real-world situations. The middle school's culture is collaborative, inclusive, and fun, thanks in large part to Michael's efforts. According to the principal, Mr. Tapeby has excelled in the classroom even as a beginning teacher. He is a learner that is continually seeking best practices and authentic learning experience for his students. Again, it's my pleasure to recognize today our third Milken Award winner, Michael Tapeby.
Thank you so much for having me. I appreciate it. And yeah, just to echo, it was such a surreal day. I feel like I normally am in the know of what's happening at Hillstone, and I was very confused why the secretary and the governor were coming. And then I continued to be confused when they started speaking and didn't really seem to have a, like a specific announcement. And then Lowell Milken was introduced. It was very surprising. It is a huge honor to be here and to receive this award. I am incredibly blessed to be an educator in the state of Arkansas and very, very thankful to work in Arkansas Public Schools. And yeah, I work with the most amazing educators around me and the most amazing educational leaders, and cannot wait to encourage and hopefully use this platform to speak about and advocate for the incredible professionalism that our public educators bring to our state and the excellence that they bring to their schools every single day, and the opportunities that our students and our children in Arkansas have to exceed and pursue their dreams in their schools, in their cities. And it is just a really big honor to be a part of that. It's the greatest profession in the world, and I get to do the best job in the world every single day. So, thank you so much.
Board members, any comments, and then we will get a picture with this.
I just, I just want to recognize Carly and her team for taking on this endeavor and continually doing the work supported by the Milken Foundation. You know, when, when you think about Teacher Appreciation Week, how fitting is it to say we've got three teachers in Arkansas that got recognized amongst the elite educators across the United States? And having an opportunity to be in each one of these fine educators' classrooms, the evidence is clear. Y'all are amazing. You're making a difference in your students' lives each and every single day, and we are very blessed and honored to recognize you today. So, thank you for your commitment to excellence.
Well, I wanted, I wanted to just excuse my voice, but I wanted to say I had the pleasure of being there for each of the awards, and it was really a cool experience. And I lost my train of thought, but I'm glad you're all back. Thank you.
It's amazing. Thank you all for coming here today to share with us. We appreciate it. Sorry to pull you out of the classroom today. I know it's a very busy time of year, but excited to send you back and continue that impact on your students.
So, Happy Teacher Appreciation Week. Just hearing you all speak brings joy to my heart, to know that we have people who are dedicated, that come to work every day to support our babies, and I just love that. And to see that you all are recognized as exemplary educators in our state, that just really shows how our education system is growing and thriving in Arkansas. So, thank you all.
Thank you. Let's get a picture.
How do you want to do it, Carly? Want to do it one at a time, or then a group?
I should ask you about their summer stuff. They need to go on some trip. They go on some trip this summer. And I don't know what else that entails. I should ask. That was great. It's exciting to hear from educators and just knowing the amazing opportunities students are getting in their classrooms and so many others. We will move along to another celebration of the Batesville School District. Mr. Kane, if you want to let us know what's going on.
Thank you, Dr. Moore. I'm Tim Kane, Director of Facilities and Transportation Division. In April, the U.S. Department of Education honored Batesville School District by awarding them the Green Ribbon School District Sustainability Award. Batesville is one of ten school districts in the nation that received that award in 2024. This award honors school districts for their efforts in three areas: reducing environmental impact and cost, improving health and wellness, and offering effective sustainability education. One of these efforts was the installation of nearly 1,500 solar panels utilizing both field arrays and canopies. This, this resulted in significant energy cost savings. It gives me great pleasure to honor their hard work and achievement, especially since I am a graduate of Batesville High School. Dr. Kenneth James, Superintendent of Batesville School District, should be on virtually, and he would like to address you now. Dr. James, are you there?
I am. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, thank you.
Well, good morning. On behalf of the Batesville School District, the Board of Education, we would like to thank the board and thank Mr. Kane for this recognition ceremony this morning. I apologize that I can't be there. I've assumed the superintendent's to here about 40 days ago, and so, we're quite busy, but we wanted to thank you for this outstanding recognition. We are very proud of each and every one of the constituents and our staff members in the Batesville School District that have made this happen. A lot of good things are going on here. I'm a Batesville native myself and glad to be back home and, and working with the Batesville School District and the Board of Education now. But we are very proud of the accomplishments. We're very proud of what this recognition brings to the Batesville School District. I know several of you on, on the panel there, and I see some on the screen that I've known for a number of years. And Secretary Aliva, I sat in your chair for about six years, and so, I understand all of the ramifications and everything that you deal with on a day-to-day basis. But I'm just honored to be here, honored to be back, and trying to help the Batesville School District get where we need to be. We want to thank you, and my board wants to thank you, and we just appreciate sincerely this significant recognition. So, thank you for taking time from your busy schedules today to recognize us.
Thank you, Dr. James. We appreciate your service, and it's neat to hear about the work that the school district has done. Board members, any questions or comments? Well, thank you. We appreciate, we appreciate you sharing and highlighting, and congratulations on that award. Thank you, Mr. Kane. Okay, with that, the end of our celebrations right now. Any changes to the action agenda? Okay, we will go ahead and start with item one, Ms. Smith with school start date waivers.
Good morning, Stacy Smith, Deputy Commissioner. When I saw my name on the agenda so many times, I threatened to have like an outfit change each time, but I decided not. How's that? All right, so the first items on the agenda today are school start date waivers. These are familiar school start date waivers that you've seen each month. The three districts that we have on our agenda is Little Rock, Mountain Pine, and Western Yale. We have been in contact with all of them. Most of them are starting on August. I think all three of them were August 12th. They requested five years as practice, and the other ones, you guys have only approved them for one year. So, I would ask today for an action to approve the three school start date waivers. And then you determine the number of years.
Board members, questions? Ms. Hunter? Any questions? Any questions from Zoom? So, just to clarify, they all did request five years, but we have been doing a one-year waiver for any other district that has chosen this waiver this year?
Correct.
Okay, well, with that, if no questions or comments, floor will be open. You're looking for a motion?
Yes, ma'am.
So, I'll make a motion to approve these waivers for one year. Second, there's a motion to approve by Ms. Hunter, a second by Ms. Keener. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Next, and inclement weather calendar waivers.
So, the second set is inclement weather, and again, you have seen these frequently. You have two school districts who are requesting the inclement weather. It is Hillcrest and Shirley. They're both requesting to move to an alternate calendar for this school year. So, if I'm asking for a motion to approve these two districts to move to an alternate calendar.
Board members, questions? To my left? To my right?
Stacy, is this similar to the ones we've already approved?
Would you repeat that?
Sorry, Ms. Woods, can you repeat that?
Yes. Are these similar to the ones that we approved in bulk a while back?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, they're asking for us, it's about the notice, about the start date, or changing their calendar. And so, it's, it's very, it's the exact same waiver that we've granted to everyone else in the state who's, who's requested.
Thank you.
Ms. Rollins, do you have any questions? And this is just for the school year?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, with that, floor will be open for a motion. If not, any more questions? Okay, a motion to approve the waiver by Mr. Bragg. Is there a second? Second. A second by Ms. Hunter. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Now, we have standards for accreditation waiver with Ms. Warsham.
Good morning. Hope Warsham, Assistant Commissioner for Public School Accountability. We want, we have one's request for a standards accreditation waiver for standard 1.85 class size. This comes from Huntsville Intermediate School. They are requesting the flexibility to combine two art, art classes into one so that they can provide their tier one and tier three instruct, core instruction and interventions in longer blocks of time in the morning. They have indicated in the request that they will provide a paraprofessional in the classroom with the art teacher in order to facilitate the number of students that would be in the classroom, and I believe that Ms. Hawkins is online if you have questions for her.
Thank you. Yes, Principal Hawkins, can you hear us?
Yes.
Thank you. Did you want to make any comments?
No, just really, our schedule this year wasn't great and conducive for all the pull-ups and push-ins for the sped inclusion. So, we're really trying to work on that. So, this would allow us the flexibility to make that more feasible for our core instruction and our sped inclusion.
Board members, questions? Mr. Wood?
I have some questions. Yes, so, why, why the decision to go to four-day week instead of a five-day week?
That was just a decision the community had buy-in, or like had, they polled them, so we had lots of surveys that went out. So, community, staff, students, everyone voted on that, and that's why they decided to go ahead and do that.
And is that, is that what has led to the need to combine these classes?
Somewhat. This year, our schedule wasn't conducive like we had. So, in the past, we've just set up a schedule, and then sped is went and polled, got first poll, and then our speeches got like second poll, and then OT, PT goes and polls. So, this year, with that not, and dyslexia, so with that not working as well this year, I have pulled all of our students' needs and strategically placed them to where we can pull them during tier three time for their dyslexia, their OT, their PT, speech, and then we can follow the sped inclusion model, so that way, students are not missing the core instruction. the core instruction.
Yeah, so I hear you talking about a lot of really important things that are being impacted by this decision, and I guess I'm a little more frustrated by the four-day decision than necessarily the art class decision or request. Is your superintendent available?
No, he's not. He's out today.
All right. Well, I think the questions I have would probably be better directed to policymakers, and I don't want to put you through the exercise of having to answer some of those, but I do have some questions for your superintendent one of these days, just about the effectiveness of a four-day week. And was this decision based on, you know, evidence? Is it the impact to students considered? I just, I have a lot of doubts about that, and I'm a little frustrated that that has left y'all in a position now of having to combine other classrooms to meet the basic, most important core needs of your students.
Yeah, I mean, I really don't know what to say. They did research, and they came back. They did live feeds on Facebook, gave out information. Like I said, there was votes and stuff. I do appreciate you helping fit me in this situation, the answer to that, because I really don't know. I'm just trying to look at the lens of it.
I guess my counter to that would be that, you know, polls and, you know, Facebook, that's not evidence-based decision-making. I'm looking for, you know, the policymakers in the district to justify how four days a week improves student learning in the classroom, more so than, you know, was this a popular community decision? That's not really my concern. But nonetheless, I appreciate that you were not the policymaker on that, and so I won't continue with that.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Hunter? Yeah, so and this is for the coming school year, correct?
Yes.
Board member questions, Ms. Keener? Mr. Bragg? Ms. Long?
I might make a comment on, to kind of Mr. Wood's comments, to the Board, not necessarily to the school district, but perhaps if the Board would like for us to do some kind of data pull in this space to do a workshop, maybe with the Board on kind of a correlation between schools that are going four days a week, schools that are going year-round, or schools that are following a more traditional calendar, and how does that impact performance based on maybe certain demographic or programs needs for students? I think this is a topic we should discuss, and if we're looking at supporting some of our most vulnerable students where the research says that they benefit from core instruction systematically, implicitly, and as often as they can get it, is there an impact between going from five days a week to a four, especially in your persistently low-performing school? So I'll just put that to the Board, that that may be, it may take us a little time to pull some of that together, but like it would be a good summer, maybe workshop, like maybe in June or July to dig deep into that, because I think there's some really good questions.
We're having a hard time hearing. I can't tell, I can't really make out what he's saying. I'm sorry.
Ms. Hawkins, we were talking about the policy in general of a four-day school week, and our Board doing some more investigating into that. I certainly have an appetite to do that. There's a lot of conversations to have, and when we're thinking about particularly students receiving special services, that now, you know, in a five-day week, districts have a hard time figuring out the best schedule for pullouts for students, much less in a four-day week, and we're certainly seeing the ramifications of that here. I did want to check, Ms. Woods and Ms. Rollins, do you all have any questions?
Yes, I do.
Ms. Rollins?
I guess, you know, I'm frustrated as well, because normally this request comes from the superintendent, and we also know if this has been approved by your school Board, just seems like the request isn't on our normal, proper forms for asking for a waiver. I'm just really not very comfortable with this at all in this form, and knowing if your Board has approved this or not. Where is your superintendent with this?
He is aware that I have applied for the waiver because I asked him about doing so. He gave me full permission to go ahead, so I reached out to Hope and asked how to do the process, and so I sent the letter in, and that's really all I know.
So this was a request for a standards of accreditation waiver, which comes in form of a request in a letterhead from the district to the standards unit, not necessarily, this is not what we would call, consider a twelve forty waiver or one of those types of waivers. That's why it looks different, and this is one of those in which the district is seeking it on their own.
So what's the difference between this and a twelve forty waiver?
So twelve forty waivers may be waiving legislation, maybe waiving something in standards for accreditation, where this is purely just standards for accreditation. So they're asking to waive the class size component of that.
But we, I feel, we've had class size waivers for Act twelve forty.
You have, usually built in with other waivers.
And in that process, that does require school board approval. Is that correct? Does this require school board approval?
The difference is the amount of time that they're requesting. So if they're requesting a standards for accreditation waiver for one year, this is the process we've been using. If they're requesting that for a longer extended period of time, that would be a twelve forty.
Ms. Hawkins, I have some further questions. So you all are an intermediate school. Are you K eight?
No, we're three five.
Three five, okay. So will all students in grades three through five receive art instruction in this setting?
Yes. Well, it depends on the week, so they would actually, but some weeks, we're still meeting the fourteen hundred and forty-minute law, so some weeks she'll have two classes for third grade, but then some she might just have one.
Okay, and is the art teacher aware and on board with this decision?
She is. She's aware, but like I said, we're waiting to see what happens, so, but she is fully aware, and we've talked about it, and what's its schedule options.
Can you talk to me a little bit further about the benefit of it? So if you have, you know, if you're combining two third-grade classes to do an art class, is it because it's freeing up time for your teachers to do intervention, or what are we achieving by putting them together?
Well, so if you, if we don't, then we have another pullout. It's just the art that's really affected, but we have, we would have to do six pullouts a day versus three. So when you're looking at three, we could do the afternoon, and that's like the time most kids are checked out early, or our buses sometimes have to run early due to shortage of drivers. So it kind of maximizes that core instruction time for the morning and also allows us more flexibility for the sped inclusion model, whereas if we have to do six pullouts a day, three of those have to be in the mornings, which interrupts like the kids, you know, if you're doing that core in the afternoon, some of them are going to miss that due to checkouts and so forth. So this would be more ideal to capitalize on student learning.
Student learning in art class or student learning in math and English? All are important.
The math and English, because right now we're a D school, so we're really trying to focus on that and getting our academics going in the right direction and student needs met. The art room would be a bigger, we'd move them to a bigger classroom so they could house two classes, and then we would have a para in and possibly two para support coming in.
Okay, and they would do that art class in the afternoon?
Yes.
Okay, and do you have a longer school day, is that correct, with the four-day week? That is concerning to hear that you have students frequently leaving early and buses running early. It sounds like you might have some lost instructional time with that, particularly only going four days. Those are my questions right now.
With the four-day, that maybe the bus stuff maybe won't be as big, like maybe we can find more drivers. I don't know. I mean, I'm just, honestly, I'm just trying to do what's best for my school and my students to get all of their needs met.
Certainly. Do you, the art teacher and other musics, PE teacher, do they do, when they're not doing those special classes, are they doing student pullouts?
They push in to our classrooms to help with interventions.
And do you share those with other school, like you, the K two school? Or six, or it's just?
Some, but they have their own in some areas, but some overlap, yes.
Okay, so for arts, is your teacher just at your school?
Yes, she's just at my school.
Okay, I'll open up the floor back to other Board members for questions.
Ms. Smith, I had a quick question. You mentioned that as this is, I shouldn't use the term waiver, but as this is a request for accreditation, that the requests typically come from the district and not from the school level?
So they're all coming from the district?
Okay, so as a representative of the district, okay.
Yeah, so standards for accreditation, in the rules for standards of accreditation, there is a process in which a district can submit a letter requesting a waiver from a standard, and this is what this school and district has done. With school-based, in standards for accreditation, there are school standards, and then there are district standards. So they're asking for a very specific school standard waiver, and they submitted a letter. When they're going for multiple years, our rules don't allow that, and that's where you come into like the twelve forty waivers and things like that.
With a twelve forty waiver, you typically have a school board have signed off on it.
I would think so, and so again, that would be whether or not the district did that or proved that in standards for accreditation. I don't know if they did that or not.
Ms. Hawkins, has there been any conversation with your school board?
Not that I, I have not had any conversations with them. I don't know if Mr. Warren did or not.
And forgive me, I should have asked this earlier. This is for one year for next school year? So I, since it's not immediate, since we're not looking at the last few weeks, I'm interested in, and I don't know the right process to do this, but maybe delaying this and all these questions that we have for the superintendent, and I have concerns with it being a four-day week, being D school, understanding that there's lost instruction time due to a lack of drivers. I think we have some larger questions to ask, and maybe we push this till next month and with the superintendent.
Yeah, I mean, I think you most definitely have the authority to not take action on it today and request that they come back next month with more explanation.
So what would that motion look like? Sorry, and I'll say.
To table?
Yeah, to table it.
Okay. So do we need to take a vote to table?
That's right. You can table it. You don't have to have a motion to table it.
Okay. Thank you.
Board members, any further questions or concerns with that? Okay, so Ms. Hawkins, we're going to make the decision to table this until next month, our June meeting. We will, the agency will be in touch with you all with our further questions as you prepare for that. Thank you for being here today.
Thank you.
And I do agree that some sort of work session this summer, as we're thinking about school start date calendars and all that and all the ramifications, could be really beneficial.
And Ms. Worsham and Legal, they're working on a process for our waivers where it all, they're all kind of coming into the same spots. We're trying to uniform like some of the forms and things like that, so hopefully this will get more streamlined as well.
Thank you. Okay, we will move on to Agenda Item Four, the consideration to remove Lee County School District from fiscal distress.
Morning, Board. Eric Saunders with District Operations. So before you this morning, I have a recommendation to remove Lee County School District from fiscal distress classification. I do have Dr. Michael Stone here with us as well, so. Next slide, please. Here's a timeline, a recent timeline of occurrences within the district. The district classified in probationary status for standards of accreditation and placed under state authority in 2019, and also in 2019, shortly thereafter, the State Board of Education classified them in fiscal distress. They have been on fiscal distress since that time as well. In 2020, the district remained classified as probationary status for standards of accreditation, and then in '21, the district requested Level Five Intensive Support, and it was approved by the State Board of Education and under that authority there. Also, I had a question from the work session yesterday about some of the history regarding fiscal distress. They were on fiscal distress in 2014, placed on fiscal distress, released in '17, and that was due to a declining net legal balance to threaten the fiscal integrity of the district. So a little bit over the most recent classification of fiscal distress was a drop in the net legal balance. You can see the numbers right there from one point one million to six hundred seventy-five thousand in one year for the decline in that legal balance, but a lot of the findings dealt with state and federal audit exceptions. You will see there were fifteen instances, and of those instances, six were repeat findings, which is a fairly extensive list of audit findings. Since that time, you can see in 2019, there were six notations on the management letter, one finance finding, and two federal findings. 2020, they had a clean audit. In 2021, there was one finding on the management letter and no finance or federal findings, and then they had clean audits in 2022 and 2023. We work with the district on creating a fiscal distress plan, and it includes a lot of items, twenty-two actions specifically, including updating policies and procedures, training staff, staffing adjustments, and frequent monitoring of finances. We with the Department and Office of Coordinated School Support, we meet with the district at a minimum monthly going over finances and other things specific to the fiscal distress plan and that area. The district has met all the components of the fiscal distress plan. Can see one thing for Lee County to consider is the three-quarter ADM, especially in that area, that you can see the loss of students over the four-year decline. Dr. Stone has come in. You can see just the change in student enrollment by forty-one students from last year to this year. He is a heavy recruiter and a staunch supporter of the school district as a, I believe, a product himself, and has strong community ties and is able to build that trust with the community, and I think you can see that reflected with student enrollment. A little bit of some of the changes with the future for Lee County School District. So as coming out of this year, going into next year, the first item, you would see, mainly due to the increase in students, you would see an increase in revenue, unrestricted revenue by approximately three hundred twenty, two thousand dollars. Also, if you look on the right-hand side, you can see savings, and that's from rightsizing the staff in different funds, unrestricted through categorical and some title funds that add up to five hundred seventy-one thousand, just in savings along there. So you can kind of stack that amount on top of the three hundred twenty-two amount that I just mentioned. Also, in SR three, that is expiring this year, and those staffing reductions amount to one hundred forty-six thousand that they had this year that they would not have last, next year. So my recommendation is to release Lee County from fiscal distress. Anytime a district is released from fiscal distress, they are still required for three years to receive the monitoring from the Fiscal Services and Support Unit, as well as having, they do debt requests, so they have items, individual items. We have a threshold with Lee County at the time, I believe, of one thousand dollars. Anytime there's a purchase, that has to be approved to buy that unit, so that, you know, we have a streamlined process that works very fast, many times within the same day, on approving those purchases and those expenditures, and so the debt would still need to be approved, and we would continue to provide additional support as needed or requested by the district. So with that, I do have Dr. Stone is here and be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Dr. Saunders. Thank you, Dr. Stone, for being here today. Board members, questions?
I do have a question for Dr. Stone, and this kind of piggybacks on questions that I had yesterday. And I'm just really interested in knowing, like, how you feel kind of the culture of the business office at the district. You know, it's one thing to have written policies, written procedures, and people just following them because that's what the procedure says, versus creating a culture of understanding controls and, you know, kind of a strong business acumen. and, you know, kind of a strong business acumen by the team there. How do you feel, are they moving, you know, positively along that path?
Yes, I feel like that we're in a positive direction there. I've got a fantastic team. We are, they're continuously learning. We go to trainings and make sure that we stay abreast of all of the latest, anything. And then also, we have APSRC and OCSS that's going to be monitoring us, and then we'll have some oversight from APSRC continuing to move forward.
Okay, thank you.
Board members, Mr. Wood.
So what are the other options available other than release? That's the recommendation from the division, but what does the law allow?
So one thing I want to make sure is clear on the fiscal distress classification. So they're at their five-year mark at the end of June, okay, for fiscal distress classification. For Level Five support, which they're under state authority for, that goes through May 2026. So they're still receiving complete wraparound support services. And the timeline on that is May 2026. So I want to make sure that we're not thinking today that everything's our hands-off. It's the classification today that we're recommending for fiscal distress that is removed. Because the initial placement for fiscal distress really was about audit findings, was already about the struggling school going on and off. They had a board, let go of a board. Things that we need to start thinking about in terms of knowing that date of 2026, and you've asked this before, like, what's the timeline? What's the plan? Starting to think about, when do we put in possibly another limited authority board? Start getting that board trained, looking at their systems pieces to make sure that when we do a handoff, they're ready for it. So right now, it's the recommendation today is, and the ask is, that they remove the classification of fiscal distress, and then we continue to support them with the current services that we're providing them under Level Five.
Yeah, that's good. That's a good explanation too, because I do think that I was confusing the two things there, state authority versus the classification. But what is the impact of the classification? And is there a similar requirement that we have to remove them within five years?
So there is a timeline on fiscal distress classification. Under fiscal distress alone, the State Board has the authority to remove and assume authority, okay? That was not what assumption of authority for Lee County was. You assumed authority of Lee County based on standards of accreditation violations.
Okay.
Okay? And then they came, we came forward and requested Level Five support, and you assumed authority under Level Five support. In the midst of all that, we classified them under fiscal distress because they had so many audit findings, and they were having that continuous decline. Under that fiscal distress piece, gave Eric's office the authority to those weekly calls, clamping their expenditures where at first they weren't allowed to spend over $500 without getting it approved. And so every expenditure decision in that has been managed and directed by this office.
More questions, Ms. Keener? Mr. Brad?
So does the trend look stable or improving right now financially?
The balance? It's stable. They do, they're a district, some of the positive things about this district is they are growing, they did have a growth of enrollment. They had been losing for multiple years, so that's a positive sign. We think that is a positive sign because Dr. Stone has provided some stability within the district and has done a good job recruiting. Right now, we're at this cliff right now because the S R funding is going away. And so we are wanting to make sure that the district is not relying upon the federal funds that they had. And so this next year, with our team working with them and Dr. Stone, we feel like they are in a good place. But if they spend a lot of money, then they won't be, right? So it's about that budgeting piece.
Thank you.
Ms. Lam? Ms. Rollins, questions? Ms. Woods?
Dr. Moore, I have some other questions. I apologize that I forgot about these. So financially, what are the overall expenses of the district in this current school year? I guess what I'm asking, more bigger picture, is what is the improvement from five years ago to today with regard to balancing its budget?
Yeah, yeah, okay, I think I can address that. So I think it's coming back. Let's talk about the audit exceptions. And so, you know, you have audit exceptions based upon the culture, as we talked about, and perhaps a lack of written procedures and policies are being followed through. You know, you have to determine the factor there. But with that, you also run into typically coding issues. In other words, where things are coded, and that makes it real difficult to budget and to track your expenditures and everything with that. And so that is one thing that we really focus on from the very beginning, is we know what funds are coming in, where are they going out? We double-check on all those, we call them single-line debt requests for every item, and we go through every single code with those and make sure they're coded appropriately. Because sometimes, you know, just for example, you may use one line item and lump a bunch of things in there, whereas you could code it in five different areas, and you would have a better understanding of where your money's going. It was, so we have that understanding now at this point of where's the money going? You know, where are places for more efficiencies? Because previously, you just, you couldn't do it unless you, basically, you pulled up your entire check register and tried to go through everything.
Sure, but I guess my concern is based on, one of these slides talks about the declining net legal balance from 1819 to 1920. Looks like it was roughly cut in half. So what's the improvement there?
Yeah, so what you would see there, so if I go there, you look at the declining net legal balance in that specific instance. Let me get the numbers right in front of me. So you could just imagine if you extrapolated out one more year where that, what would happen then? You know, then you could have cash flow issues, you could have all kinds of things. So, yeah, we've worked with that. We may see a slight dip this year on the net legal. It's just because of tax collections that occurred during the fall semester, and I know Dr. Stone has reached out to them. But like with the rightsizing and the corrections, you notice there was, on that last slide, or not the last slide, the second or third to the last slide, I showed, is about a million dollars' worth of, I guess you'd say positives between this year and next year. We're able to do the resource allocation and make sure that every position that we had was needed and that where the needs are, there is a position with that. And so, yeah, I feel very comfortable with it.
Okay.
Dr. Saunders, you, thank you for giving me a timeline earlier of the district. So it looks like the district had previously been under state control, was previously under fiscal distress classification. It was rescinded in 2017, and then by September 2017, and then by May of 2019, the district was reclassified in fiscal distress. So I would like to hear just a little bit more about what y'all's work is going to look like the next five years with the district, such to avoid what happened before.
So we've had legislative changes since then. So one of the things that has happened was the legislation that passed that allowed the department, once released, to continue to monitor for an additional three years. Previously, you were classified, released, and...
And there was no monitoring?
There was no monitoring, and we were completely stepped back. And I think as we have continued in our support for districts that are under state authority, we see that this gradual release back is important, just like establishing a limited authority board, having time to slowly release versus your board was removed, and then the next day, we release, and you have a whole new board again, and nobody's there to help you again. So I think this slower process is needed. So I think that's some of the changes. You have seen this with Lee County going back and forth. I'm feeling probably more confident with Lee County in terms of community support, ongoing support. But it is the conversation that needs to start occurring now is, how do we start operating over the next two years to ensure that when we do step back, that they can continue to handle it?
Thank you.
I guess a significant difference between right now and what would have been seven years ago is that Lee County's still under state authority. In 2017, they were not under state authority after that decision, right?
Most likely. I'd have to have the timeline right in front of me.
Yeah.
But I'm going to agree with you.
Well, I think that, yes. Thanks for agreeing.
Yes, they had been returned to a local board in March of 2015.
And right on top of that, the law on the three-year monitoring and the debt request that continues on, that was not passed until 2019.
Yeah.
That's all that needs, so.
Thank you. Board members, more questions or comments? On Zoom, any questions? Welcome, Andy, by the way. Any questions for you?
No.
Thank you. Okay, then our floor will be open for a motion if no further questions.
I move that the board release Lee County School District from fiscal distress.
Okay, there's a motion by Mr. Wood. I'll second. And a second by Ms. Hunter. Any questions? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Motion passes. Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Stone and your team for traveling here today.
Can I, before, Dr. Stone, before you leave, I do think it would be worth a minute, if I could, request to just give Dr. Stone a chance to brag on some of the gains they've had academically this past year and the year before. Their elementary school went up a full letter grade in over a year. There's a lot of wonderful things happening in the school district, and it's a lot of the testament to his leadership and the culture around increasing rigor in academics in the classroom. And since he's already here, I think it'd be worthwhile if we just have a few minutes to just celebrate with Dr. Stone the many accomplishments he's achieved. I totally put you on the spot, so I apologize for that, but it's worth it.
I'm sitting here thinking, I did not make notes or prepare for that. But yes, we did move a letter grade from, I guess, over the last decade or so. Both of our schools have been F schools. Last year, we moved into, at our elementary school, to a D status, and we were 0.3 percentage points away from a D at the high school as well. So we're looking forward to seeing what this new assessment and this new time yields for this year. So we've had a lot of accomplishment. We've been looking at our formative assessments, and we've shown growth from the beginning to the end of our formative assessments. And so we're feeling pretty confident that we're going to be in a good spot. This year, we've graduated, I understand that last year, 200 students in the state of Arkansas graduated with an Associate's Arts degree. This year alone, we've had, we had three to graduate with Associate's Arts. And so we've got a lot of positive, positive growth. We have students with a score of 30, 26, 25 on ACT. So we're steadily growing. We're trying to get better. We will get better. We're just, we're putting those systems in place, systems of accountability, systems for academic growth. And I think we'll continue to see those growth throughout the years as we get better at what we do, what we do as a district. So, thank you for giving me the opportunity.
Yeah, you're already here, so we've got to give you a chance to brag.
Before you leave, I want to brag as well. I had the pleasure of heading down there and visiting, and we spoke a lot at length about early childhood and his desire to, you know, bring industry to the area. And I said, you've got to provide childcare, and you guys are on, I have this dream of creating this community school in the Delta, and you guys are on kind of my shortlist of where I'd love to see that in place, where you can serve infants all the way through preschool, you can serve as a lab school for high school students that are earning their CDA, concurrent credit, a place for high school students with children to have their children on campus and go and more likely to graduate high school. And, you know, all the discussions we had about these things, he wants to get involved, and he wants to look for solutions, and it's on us to do what we can do to make that possible for you. So you're on my list. Thank you.
Well, thank you. And we've had our second PLC with our community, pre-K, or anyone serving daycares, the private school, anyone serving, anyone that's in the pre-K area. We had our second PLC where we brought everyone together, and we're talking about looking at data. What can we do to support your program to get them ready for any one of our schools? So we are looking forward to continue that work.
Well, if you have another one, reach out. I'd be happy to come down and visit again.
Thank you.
Thanks. Thank you, Dr. Stone.
Thank you.
We appreciate you.
Have a great day.
Thank you.
Well, thank you, and thank you again, Lee County staff, for coming as well. We will move on to Agenda Item Five. We have a set of four rules for final approval.
All right. Just quickly, again, wanted to kind of state the process that rules go through. They come to the State Board to be released for public comment. They go out, they're noticing to the public and go out for public comment for a minimum of 30 days. If substantial changes are made because of the public comment, they go back out again. Once changes are made, comments are addressed, they come back to the Board for final approval. Once you approve, they then go to the Arkansas Legislative Council for review. So this first set of four rules, the Student Protection Act, the Legal Transfer, Educated Performance Rules, and the Right to Read Rules are in their final leg for State Board. They have gone through this process of public comment. Changes that needed to be made have been made, and now they're back to you for final approval. So again, the Student Protection Act, very quickly, had one addition to it. This was a previous rule, so it had minor changes, did not receive, there were no changes after public comment. Rules governing student transfer, this was the, the change here was, local school boards had the ability to do student transfers between board to board. What was added to this was it now allows for then a process that people can come to State Board as an appeal to be heard. Third rule, Educated Performance. This was one that was changed because of public comment. And the definition of annual rating, most of the comments had specifically to do with confusion between a final summative evaluation and the opportunity to give an annual rating. So we clearly just defined what annual rating was because it was mentioned in the rules. And then the last one, Right to Read. Most of the comments on that really were around professional development, training, the new assessment system, but nothing necessarily to change in the specific rules. So today, I request for final approval, these four rules to move from State Board to ALC.
Board members, questions? Mr. Henderson?
No.
Mr. Brad? Ms. Lam?
Not a question, but a comment.
Yes, sir.
About the rules governing educated performance. Specifically, the, it's not really about the rules. It's about the volume of comments that we got on that one. And, you know, a lot of times we put rules out and we get no comments.
Right.
There's a lot of comments about those rules, and I understand why, the sensitive nature, that, you know, the most important people in the process of educating children are directly impacted by this. And so it generated a lot of interest across the state. That interest is going to continue. And as I looked through the comments, and when you look at the department response to those comments, probably it was unsatisfying to the people that made those comments or, and read the response. And I understand, I understand, you know, why the response is so abbreviated and whatever. But I hope that it just highlights that a lot of people across the state want to know a lot about this, and there needs to be a lot of communication with teachers and, you know, however that is, to help them, you know, feel that their comments are heard, appreciated, and that they are the most valuable part of the education.
And actually, I appreciate you pointing that out because it gives me the opportunity to kind of tell you a little bit more about what we've done, okay? So in reading the rules, because this is the rules that address merit pay. And so there's lots of questions and lots of, this is the first time we've done where teachers are actually, and school districts are doing rostering on their students and their test scores, and teachers are actually going in saying, yes, I teach this kid. yes, I teach this kid, I'm the primary teacher, I'm the secondary teacher. It's the first time they've done a lot of things. So a lot of the questions you're seeing in the rules were pertaining to that. A lot of the questions in the public comments, not the rules, the public comments, had to do with the evaluation, and did it align with tests, did it not align with tests? Carly has actually been out going around and doing, addressing teachers, administrators, and superintendents throughout the co-ops. She's actually been on several Zooms with AAEA and their administrative teams, the superintendents from around the state, talking through this. And so while the comments, legal, we try not to get legal to say a whole lot. We try to keep them short. And so legal's comments were, no, if we didn't change, we didn't change, or just addressing specifically what it was. But in terms of going through and explaining, trying to make connections, Carly's team is working on that.
Well, good. Well, good.
So. But I appreciate that. And as these move forward, and as we are hoping to be able to do our first round of merit pay, hoping, if, once these get approved and get through ALC, we're hoping that we'll be able to do that in June. And I'm sure we're going to learn lessons the first time we do it. And we may have to come back with changes or revisions based on our experience. But good questions. Thanks for reading the comments, because there were a bunch.
Ms. Rollins, Ms. Woods, do you have questions?
Again, not a question so much as a comment. Was there anything, because there was a lot of rules to read through, that was anything majorly substantive that I might have missed?
No, the only thing that was changed on the performance was really defining that annual rating, what that was, versus the summative evaluation. The test, the test evaluation is only required, full teacher evaluation is only required once every four years, but that is on all components. And there are artifacts required, there's observations required, there's a collection. It is a big task. And so school districts don't have to, or haven't been in the practice of necessarily giving an annual rating. The annual rating is not the full test evaluation. And that's where confusion was coming in. And so Carly's team, again, is going around talking about, what is an annual rating? You're still doing teacher walkthroughs, you're still collecting data, you're still doing teacher observations, but you're not necessarily asking for a portfolio. Teachers every year still have professional growth plans, so they're getting information and feedback on that. You can give a teacher an annual rating based on that information without a full test evaluation. And so that's the clarification, and the requirement to receive merit pay is that you do have at least an annual rating.
So if we made that substantive change, what's, why would we not reissue these for public comment?
We didn't feel like, we didn't feel like it was substantive, and this is the reason. The word annual rating was in the rules, that they had to have an annual rating, where we saw confusion expressed through the comments where people were saying annual rating was that summative evaluation. So we just clarified with the definition of annual rating.
Okay, sorry, I misunderstood.
That's probably, I didn't explain it right.
No, I'm going to take blame for that, Stacy. You probably did a great job.
Okay, thanks.
Ms. Rollins, questions?
Can I ask one more?
Yeah.
Well, ask eight questions.
You can, because you said my dress was lovely today, so yes, you can. I'm sorry, Dr. Moore, that was really deep.
A little bit in the vein of my comment a minute ago, will there be direct communication to educators regarding this as opposed to depending on AAEA or co-ops to communicate it? I feel like if a letter went to every educator and every new educator got this information at the time of licensure, that it would be very beneficial to hear it explicitly, clearly, from the department, what various criteria are and whatever.
So I see Carly making her way up here, so I'm sure Carly has a plan that she's going to share with you.
Carly Saraceni, Assistant Commissioner. Yes, we are working on a plan, but with the rules not through the process of approval, it's hard to really push out any communication. And then we have a really short runway this year to get the money out. My office, we push out the National Board money every year and the funding for it. So we are, we are working on a plan that we will do something similar. We will verify things with the superintendent, and then we will push out NRL system, which is our licensure system. We have emails of everyone that's working. And so we can do a mass email to everyone. And we thought we would try to do that simultaneously as we go forth with the funding. So that's our.
May I ask a question on that, though?
Go ahead, no, go ahead.
That, that does prove a little bit challenging, because the annual observation rating, some teachers might not have had this year.
Okay. So I had, I felt like I've been on a whirlwind tour of the state, because I've not only addressed administrators, but also school board members. And we're making it clear that now that we have our own evaluation system, the EES system, we can pull that at any given time, because it's live data, and we can pull that ourselves. We have really talked to every administrator over the past probably four to six weeks to make them understand that this annual rating is very important. And we are taking phone calls, we rolled it out with superintendents, followed up by webinars, followed up by office hours. And we are still doing office hours two days a week so that administrators can get on and we can make sure and help them through this process. So we've really had a great plan as we've tried to roll this out, because communication, communication is so important. So, and we've really learned that the office hours are really important. We can have anywhere from 50 to 150 on it. And we even do breakouts, because larger districts have different issues than smaller districts. So yes, we knew the support and communications were top on our priority.
And as we roll this out the first year, we're always going to err on the side of the teacher. If someone doesn't have an annual rating, and we see that their scores are here, we're going to contact that district, we're going to make sure that the opportunity is given for them to be able to give it. We don't want to punish someone because someone else didn't know or have something done. So our goal is to work. And kind of going back to your comment about, teachers don't understand this right now. That is clear. And so, once the approval and we're able to roll this out, being able to provide some type of information, more than maybe probably been a letter, but something that's maybe a chart or a table about how this is distributed, because the whole, the goal is that teachers look around and see teachers in their own building who are getting it, and that they have an understanding of how that occurred and what's their opportunity next time. We want to celebrate the teachers who are getting merit pay. So what does that look like as we move forward? We just haven't had the chance to do all those pieces yet, but it is needed, so. I think our dependence right now on talking to the administrators has to do with more of making sure they're getting those ratings in, so.
More questions, board members? Ms. Woods or Ms. Rollins? Okay, so we have four sets of rules for final approval. We can have a motion to approve all four at once, or one at a time?
Yep, so I would be seeking a motion to approve the Student Protection Act rules, Legal Transfer Rules, Educator Performance Rules, and Right to Read Rules as approved for, as in final form. The final review.
Floor is open for a motion.
I move to approve, final approval for all four.
There's a motion by Mr. Bragg to approve four sets of rules for final approval. Is there a second?
Second.
A second by Mr. Henderson. Any questions, comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Motion passes. Thank you. So now we have a set of rules to be released for public comment.
So we have 11 rules that we're looking at releasing for the first time for public comment. So again, once you release them, they'll be noticed to the public, and they'll be out for at least 30 days. So that's what we're asking for today. So those set of rules are as follows. Let's see, is the presentation still up? So the first set is Arkansas Governor's School. Really, the main work here was clarification of processes. When you look at this set of rules, there are a lot of revisions, but it's not necessarily a lot of changes. It's just in how it was organized throughout. The second set is background checks. And this has to, I'm going to do three right now. If you, if you want to stop me at any time for questions, please just wave me down, okay? The second one on here was the rules governing background checks. And this is where we had registered volunteer coaches are now required to have a background check. It also requires district-level administrators to notify within 24 hours of a disqualifying offense for a registered coach or staff. And then our system actually then flags anybody who has, is under an investigation. And then the third one, which kind of piggybacks a little bit on the background checks that we talked about yesterday, was the Code of Ethics. So it takes that registered volunteer coach and kind of lays them underneath that educator thing so that if there is a complaint against them, it now can go to PLSB for an actual hearing, where before we were just relying, you weren't relying on either. And so now they fall under that same category. And as we talked about yesterday, there are lots of districts throughout the state who have registered volunteer coaches, especially for smaller sports. And so now they're underneath that umbrella. So I'm going to pause there on those three and see if you have any questions on those three.
Board members, questions? Mr. Henderson, Mr. Bragg, questions? Ms. Rollins, Ms. Woods, questions?
Yes, Dr. Moore, could Stacy talk to us about what it means, registered volunteers? What is that? How are they registered?
So they are registered through AAA as a coach, and they have to go through trainings. There are certain requirements for coaches in our state for training. And so they also have to have the child maltreatment. So they are someone who is maybe volunteering within the district, but they're working in the district, and they have met all the qualifications required through AAA to be a coach.
Okay, thank you.
I'll also add, what's really great about this rule, and you can see that it ties to the LEARNs Priorities and Legislation Initiative, that a lot of times with LEARNs, we've really been focusing on the literacy, the empowerment, the accountability, but the S is safety. And there are some great pieces of that legislation to ensure that when we put adults in charge of monitoring students or taking them on trips or being the person of record, that we want to make sure we have qualified in folks that have had these background checks. And what, what this great piece of legislation does is make sure that when a district is hiring someone to be a coach, or that may not be a full faculty member with a teacher license, where they came in to get background checks because they're getting a certification, that we're requiring those folks are going to work with our children to meet those same background checks and requirements. And then even the notification on if there's a substantiated allegation, meaning if there's an investigation where somebody made an egregious behavior or conducted something that we'd say was on the Level Five concern of ethics, that we put a flag in the system. And it's not saying that we've made a decision. It's just letting our state know, and would let potential other districts know that there's something there that they need to call and get some more information about, because we have reciprocity with several other states. And unfortunately, there's been incidences where bad actors that have been under investigation in this state go to another state and use reciprocity to get a license to continue that bad acting, and we are closing this hole because of the priority on student safety. And this is, this is a great rule, and I look forward to continuing the dialogue.
And it's connecting that, that background check over now with Code of Ethics. So this group that's registered and volunteered, they never had that level of scrutiny too. So they could be removed completely if found over here, whereas before you didn't have that. And unfortunately, you guys have seen too many come before you with violations of standard one, maintaining professional relationships.
Well, and what I can, what I really appreciate about this is that it adds that extra layer by requiring them to report it, but also relieving some of the burden on the school districts to repeat background checks. You know, you can repeat them every year, and you're just doing ridiculous work that's, this is the way to do it. And so we know about the bad actors without overburdening those that are not doing the wrong thing in the district. So I appreciate that.
Okay, more questions or comments on these three rules?
So I'm going to go ahead and ask for an action to approve these three rules, Arkansas Governor's School, Background Checks, and Code of Ethics for release for public comment.
Floor is open for a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve these to release for public comment.
Okay, Ms. Keener made a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Bragg. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Motion passes.
Okay.
All right, so we'll move forward with the next batch here. So Better Beginnings, yesterday in the work session, Ms. Keener identified a couple of areas that she wanted us to address, and those adjustments have been made. So the ratio piece, where there was like a pasting error that has been corrected. So those have been updated on the agenda, and when they're released, those will be the ones that are posted. Again, so Better Beginnings is our quality rating for our early childhood centers throughout the state. Some of the biggest pieces really on this one was the transformative change of moving the Office of Early Childhood from the Department of Human Services over to the Department of Ed. As I stated in the work session, we fully expect to see these rules overhauled over the next year. Okay? As we continue to analyze what we rate as quality, as we continue to look at how we want to transform early childhood in our state, these, these rules will be coming back to you again. Do you have, do you have a question?
I just want to say that I so appreciate the extra effort on the legal department and everybody for making those changes, because it'd be really easy to say, oh, we'll fix those later when we do the overhaul. But understanding the need to make this work now is, I really do appreciate that, so thank you.
The next set of rules have to do with the rules regarding, governing, the requirements of procedural, procedures for obtaining, obtaining an Arkansas birth through pre-kindergarten teaching credential. My goodness. Might need to work on the title and the change, right? Get that shorter. So this was a rule that came over from DHS to the department. And so it was about obtaining a credential, a credential for early childhood. This is not a full teaching license, this is a credential. As again, we continue to look for, how do we create these pathways? How do we intertwine even our pre-educator force with early childhood pieces? I think there's opportunities here, but this is for folks who generally have like an associate's degree.
Any questions, board members?
The third set of rules here are the rules governing dyslexia screenings and interventions. So in these rules, there were actually quite a few changes centering around reporting, centering around the new assessment and the screening tools within that. I do feel that we will get numerous comments on this. Yesterday in the work session, one of the things that was talked about was the length of the program and rules. So in my mind, I thought it might be helpful in the next month for us to even kind of take these rules and break them apart in a chart so that we can kind of see, like, this is what parents would now be getting out of these rules. This would be the responsibility on a timeline for assessment. Because right now, when you read them, you're seeing the days and times, but like, how can we break that out so that it can, because there's, there's quite a bit in here. So I think we'll try to get that done in a chart form that we can kind of post along and be able to answer questions a little bit easier with that. I'll pause and see if there's any questions on that one.
I think that would be great, particularly though it will be public interest and public comment on these rules.
Yeah, and I think when we can kind of block it together like that, maybe we might find a hole. Or we might find like, oh, wow, there is a lot of communication there, or there's a pretty good timeline, or is that timeline too tight? Is it reasonable? Right? Seven days sounds good, right? But what does it look like when it's kind of mapped out?
Well, timeline-wise for these, I assume, these will not come back to us in June. It will, we'll have to, yeah, it'll be more like July, okay.
These will go out for 30 days. If there's- If there's substantive comments, then they'll go, we'll make those changes and we'll go again, and we'll keep your price of that. I know there's several on the board who are really interested in these. And so if not, if there's not substantive changes, that there's, if it's pretty good, then they'll come back to you pretty quickly.
Board members' questions? Mr. Henderson, Mr. Bragg, Ms. Rollins, Ms. Woods, questions?
I do have a question, and I apologize if this was covered yesterday in the work session. When it talks about under, let me get it pulled up here, probably under old Section 4 or 5, about like the dibbles or dibbles, we aren't taking those rules out to say that is not an assessment we could administer, it's just one of? Is that, am I understanding that?
So for K2, we now have a statewide screening tool that's built in our assessment system. So every student across the state will be taking the same assessment and same screener. So if, and this board will help us set those cut scores. So we'll come to you guys with recommendations. And so when a student scores a certain level, they will be flagged for additional Level 1 dyslexia screening, which we have built into the system. And so districts, instead of pulling different screening tools that they're using, they will be now using the tools that we've established and the cut scores that we've established, so that we have clearly defined what those levels are. Again, there is different diagnostic assessments that you can do, delve deeper into to get more information. Let's say a student flags low, they do more diagnostics, and maybe it was, the kid wasn't feeling well, or something like that. So it's not automatic that you're, but you're definitely gonna have to take the screening assessment, and you're definitely, parents are gonna be notified.
My other overarching question was, and I haven't read these side-by-side, is there any potential conflict between the rules that we just approved with the right to read, and then also these going out for public comment?
Not that I believe. We, the literacy team gave feedback to both of these.
Okay.
And I think in some of the, I'm trying to think, on the license, on the right to read rules, you know, special education teachers who are teaching literacy have to demonstrate proficiency. And so in these rules, you'll see where they're referred to special education teachers providing the dyslexia services, because they've met that proficiency standard. But we don't necessarily outline it again in these rules.
And the only reason I ask is that I'm thinking, forward-thinking, I just didn't want somebody coming to the board saying, well, under the right to read, I have, I'm entitled to these services, but I'm not under the dyslexia rules.
Yeah, we'll go back and do a side-by-side, but I feel like the team that has worked on both of those rules are the same set.
Okay, cool.
But that's happened before.
Well, you know.
Any more questions, board members? Do we wanna go ahead and, it was three sets of rules here?
Yep, so I will ask for a motion from the board to release for public comment the Better Beginning rules, the requirement procedures for obtaining an Arkansas birth through pre-K teaching credential, and the dyslexia screening and intervention rules.
Floor is open for a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to release rules for public, all three.
The motion by Mr. Henderson, a second by Mr. Bragg. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Okay, the next set of rules are the rules governing educator licensure. This is probably one of your lengthiest set of rules that you have, there are lots of changes there. This has kind of been a work that's been going on for the past year. One of the executive orders had to do with creating, you know, efficiency and reducing red tape around especially licensure and creating pathways. And so this is the work that this team has been doing. It allows districts to address vacancies by permitting educator preparation intern programs and the aspiring teacher permit, allows flexibility in demonstrating content knowledge to obtain a license, allows for multiple pathways to special education licensure, where before you were really tied to a long-term sub or a licensed special ed teacher. It measures the fidelity of science of reading within our programs with science of reading audits, and requires our educator preparation programs to complete a year-long residency. I do feel like we will get lots of comments on these rules as well.
Any questions, board members?
The next set of rules is the rules governing emergency response equipment and training in Arkansas public schools. This requires schools to have an opioid rescue kit, requires school nurses and school resource officers to carry Narcan on themselves. It requires schools to have their kits labeled and accessible. Keeps states, keeps schools safe by requiring the AEDs in certain school, at certain schools' sponsored events, and requires training for personnel in the use of the different equipment that is required.
Any questions, board members?
I do have one, one or two. That type of equipment sometimes requires inspection and things like that. Will we do that independently? How would that process take place?
So our school health unit has actually done an excellent job of working with school nurses across the state and ensuring that they have proper training. They've also secured grant funding from various sources that have actually provided equipment and materials to address this law, provided the opioid rescue kits, have provided AEDs where necessary, battery changing. So the training part on how do you maintain and update is something that our school health unit leads.
Well, and I think that when the fire department comes through...
It's an inspection.
Yes, it's part of the inspection along with everything else they do, so.
And it's part of even like a cycle report, they're asked about, do you have these? Where do you have them posted? And so districts are prompted multiple times to give information pertaining to them. And, you know, I would say, I'm aware of times when the AEDs and opioid rescue kits have saved lives on our schools this year. And I think most schools actually appreciate the fact that if they were to have a situation, they're, they're a step closer to being prepared.
Ms. Smith, I know fentanyl seems to be coming more and more to the forefront. Do we have any training or any equipment that would help with anything pertaining to fentanyl?
Yeah, the opioid overdose rescue kit is specifically for that, and the training that goes along with that. School nurses throughout the state have had training. We have what we call chips and chins, and there's names for what those mean, but I couldn't tell you what it is right now. I'm just gonna look pretty in my blue dress, okay? Community health nurses, there you go. Yeah, she knew one of them. Anyway, listen. One is policy, one is nursing, okay? I don't even know what we were talking about, what the question was. So they do have training on that.
So is fentanyl an opiate? I don't, are considered an opiate?
Yeah, so I think that's what, yes. I think that, I can definitely get our school nurse people to come ask more specific questions, but I think that is what specifically the Narcan is used for when there is a fentanyl overdose.
Okay, all right, that helps, thank you.
And if I find out that I was wrong on that, I will make sure and email you.
Well, and it's for any opioid, like, obviously, cotton, any, anything like that, and yeah, so fentanyl's just the newest that has been in the news lately.
And this also falls under the safety part of LEARNs, so it's part, it's part of that conversation that doesn't seem like it gets a lot of attention, but for the practitioners that are doing this work, it's very empowering and reassuring that the training, the equipment, the investments that they've made is aligned with, with our statewide safety plan and how we're gonna make sure we keep students safe within our care.
The third one here is fiscal assessment accountability programs. The only change to these rules was the repeal of teacher fair dismissal, so that was removed from these rules. That was the only change.
Any questions on that, board members?
Okay, so, okay, so at this time, I will ask for approval or an action to release for public comment the rules governing educator licensure, the rules governing the emergency response equipment and training in Arkansas public schools, and the rules governing the fiscal assessment and accountability program.
Okay, floor is open for a motion.
How do we release these?
I'll make it approved.
A motion by Mr. Bragg.
A second.
And a second by Ms. Woods. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes.
All right, the next set of rules are the maternity leave cost-sharing program rules. These were specific to LEARNs. This is a great opportunity for teachers across the state and districts to provide up to 12 weeks of maternity leave, with the state having a cost-sharing agreement for those educators when they are out on maternity leave. This year, we did have some schools who have participated in the cost-sharing agreement. We're hoping that as we move, as the rules get approved and more information is out, that we're gonna see this increase next year. Great opportunity to recruit and retain teachers in your, in your school districts.
Absolutely. Questions, board members?
I'm just so proud of this piece of it. It's one that we don't hear about enough, and to me, you know, we understand that infant and toddler care is in crisis all over the country, and I'm so proud to say that here in Arkansas, we're working at it from two different vantage points. We're trying to improve access and quality, obviously, on the state end, but also allowing parents the option to stay home if they want to. That's just phenomenal, and that will relieve part of that burden on infant toddler care, so I'm excited about this.
Well, and I think too that when we look at recruiting, retaining, and part of a strategy of making sure we have the best educators in front of our classrooms, this also goes to support staff as well. So this is gonna help districts make sure they get high-quality folks.
And I think you're, and you know, the conversation on schools start thinking about retention recruitment of their staff by providing things like the maternity leave, or providing early childhood partnership care, having a center, school-based center in which their teachers' children can come. So I think there's more opportunities like that to be discussed and to be highlighted. So I don't think it's a matter of people not wanting, I think it's just people hadn't thought about it. So it's a good opportunity. Thanks for highlighting that. The next set of rules has to do with water safety. We had legislation that requires school districts to notify and inform their parents of the importance of water safety, and to provide them information where their child can have swimming lessons. So our department has actually created kind of a form or a flyer that provides some, some swimming facts and safety facts, and then allows the school districts to customize it and provide their information where their parents, or where kids can go get swimming lessons locally. So these are the rules around that.
Questions, board members? I do have a question. Is that something y'all will receive from the district? You'll see what the district send out?
No.
Okay, I would be curious. I know in my part of the state, there is a lack and a gap in opportunities for students, and so.
I think, I think the intent of this legislation was to create an awareness of a lack, and for folks to start realizing there's nothing around us, so is there something we can do to try to create something? And so I think that was some of the driving force behind this.
Yeah, like the new community pool in Pine Bluff, newer, it's awesome.
So, yeah, so if there's nothing that they can put down, is there an opportunity to create a partnership somewhere?
Okay, questions, board members?
It noted bodies of water, I mean, my guess is inclusive to swim pools, lakes, any type of...
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. So at this time, if there's no question, I would ask for an action to approve for public comment the rules governing maternity leave and the rules governing water safety.
So I move we approve to release for public comment the maternity leave cost-sharing program rules and the rules governing water safety.
Okay, the motion by Ms. Keener, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Bragg. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Now we are on item seven.
Item seven, rules that we are repealing. Some of these rules are simply outdated. Some of these rules, the information has been pulled into another set of rules, or has completely been repealed. And so we have put forward the rules for governing educator compensation, the rules governing eligibility of participating school districts in the trial and teacher program, teacher recruitment and retention in high-party districts, rules governing reimbursement for school election expenses, governing school board zones and rezoning, and the rules for school districts to report student criminal acts, and the rules governing the succeed scholarship program. And one more, the rules governing the methods of administration of career and technical education programs. In the work session yesterday, we kinda talked about which of those had been repealed, which of those had kinda been pulled into the others. These rules will follow the same process. They will go out for 30-day public comment for people to respond to us repealing these rules and give us information.
Thank you. Board members' questions?
Is, is there a master document somewhere that kind of explains what you just said, the purpose of the repeal, and where, where, where it could be found, if it's in a new rule, or something like that?
I don't know that I have a master document. I know that, I think in the posting that you're actually saving.
Yeah, there's no master document that contains all of them together, but with each submission, as we send them to either BLR, the Bureau, or to the governor's office, we usually have explanations about why it's being repealed. So if you have any questions about any particular reason, how good are these ones?
Well, I guess I'm interested in all of them, to be honest. And I kinda think the public would be interested in that too. It seems, it seems as though it might be wise to include that with the length, the markup that's being released to the public as to why it's being repealed and where, where its replacement could be found, if there is a...
Yeah, I think that's a great suggestion, and it's something that we can easily do.
Yeah, we're gonna attach it to the document as we upload it.
Yeah, so we can put the reason, yeah, so if it's been absorbed somewhere else, or if it's been, I think it's a great suggestion.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Ms. Rollins, Ms. Woods, questions?
And I'll send that to you too, once we get it done.
Yeah, I'd appreciate it.
Okay, the floor will be open for a motion, and this is to release these rules for public comment, so it does come back to us for final repeal.
Yes, so I'm looking for an action to release for public comment the following rules.
Floor is open for a motion.
I'm sorry, I guess I do have a question.
Yes.
So if we get public comment that one of these rules has not been absorbed somewhere else, does that mean they stay in place? Or we work those into another set of rules?
So, again, depending on the public comment themselves, that would then be decided, does it, if it's been repealed, then it wouldn't be absorbed somewhere else. If we feel like the information that they're saying is being repealed is needed, and that we've not put it somewhere else, then we would make, we would comment as to what we're gonna do next. So that information would then come back to this board in the form of public comment and our response.
Can I make a motion to release the rules for public comments?
A motion by Mr. Henderson, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Bragg. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. We'll go to action item eight, consideration of request for nominated members to the PLSB.
Put these in, bring notes back just one.
Let's do, let's get through action, and then do, yeah, we'll, we'll get through the action here, and then take a break. Unless, Stacy, unless, Ms. Smith, you need some more time.
I think we're good on these two here. Okay, so coming before you today to request the approval to nominate a member for the Professional Licenseur Standards Board, so the request is to recommend Dr. Davis. She'll be replacing a board member who is rolling off. Rules require that there are a certain number of higher... Rules require that there are a certain number of higher ed candidates on the board, and rules also work with the deans throughout the state for them to make a recommendation. And so, this is their recommendation to the department, which we've accepted in that we are submitting to you. So, requesting today to approve Dr. Davis on the Professional Licenseur Standards Board.
Questions? Comments, board members? Ms. Rollins, Ms. Woods, questions? Can you tell me, how many members are on the PLSB board?
I believe it's between 10 and 12.
Okay, and they're all for three-year terms?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Are they, do they apply or do they, what's the process?
So, you have higher ed members who work with the deans, and then they make a recommendation. We have administrators who we work with AAEA, and this is all, is outlined in the rules for it. They make a recommendation on who would, who would represent the administrators, and then you have a group of teachers, and then teachers are...
It's...
Come to the speaker.
It's specifically in the law that we work with ASTA and AAEA, so that we have equal representation, higher ed, educators, teachers, classroom teachers, and administrators.
I've said this for a long time, but I would love to see some legislation in an upcoming session to put in a parent representative. There's no one on that board who's specifically thinking about students only. I mean, everyone's thinking about students, but like, sole role is a parent. That changes things sometimes, so. Put that on y'all's list. I think we talked about it before, but I, I feel strongly in that. Take the time to say it now.
I have a question.
Yes.
Are nominations vetted to any degree to make sure that they have never had a finding by the PLSB?
Yes, they are vetted. We make sure with AAEA, with the administrators, and when they send us the recommendation, we look at everything. Same thing with teachers, same thing with the dean's council.
Okay, and so, we can assume that when y'all present an individual, a nomination to us, that it's past all that and there are no background issues of any sort?
Yes, sir.
Good. Thank you. You should sit closer.
Yeah. I'm standing right beside me.
Okay, questions, board members, comments? I appreciate the service of those who get on PLSB. It's a very challenging and difficult and very important job, so. With that, floor will be open for a motion for the nominating member.
This is just for number eight?
Yes.
Okay.
So, I'll, I'll make the motion to approve the nomination of Kimberly Davis to the PLSB.
There's a motion by Ms. Hunter, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Keener. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Also today, asking to request to approve Dr. Harold Jeffcoat as a member to the Professional Licenseur Standard Board. He is actually a current member and is, they have submitted his name to continue his role on there for an additional three years.
Questions, board members?
Is there a term limitation? I mean...
They're up for, with a recommended for three years, and then they can be resubmitted.
Questions, comments, board members?
And he did his student teaching under me. I taught him everything he knows.
Ms. Rollins, Ms. McFetrich? I did, it is a big ask to continue to do three more years on the board, so appreciate that service. Okay, floor is open for a motion then.
Move to approve the nomination of Dr. Harold Jeffcoat to the PLSB.
There's a motion by Mr. Wood, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Henderson, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Let's do the consent agenda, and then we'll take a break. Is there, first, is there any new business that needed to be added? Okay, consent agenda, there's a number of items. Any board members have questions or want to pull any items?
Yes, I'd like to pull two items.
Okay.
Shoot, I have this written down here. It is items 7.4 and 7.5.
Okay, so that would be the consideration for the ABG Parents Program renewal grants and the professional service grants to be pulled for next month's action agenda.
Yes.
Okay.
And do, should I specify why or what?
I think that would be helpful, and then, and then if we have further questions, we can send them into the agency to get them answered.
Great, okay. So, one of the things I'm looking for on, the reason I'd like to pull these and wait for a later date is we don't have any sort of return on investment for these grants. So, I'm hoping to get an annual report on each of these or from each of these and how they're spending the money and what it's going towards and the effectiveness and the outcomes. If they don't submit an annual report, I wanted to give them the time to create one, you know, to, that we could sort of work that out. I'd also like to ask that these reports be made available by May 30th, so that if they don't fulfill what we're looking for, we'll have time to say, hey, go back and give me one more, one more thing. Some of the pieces that I'm looking for, particularly in the professional service grants, is the number of trainings that were offered, the attendance at such trainings, and the movement of programs along the Better Beginnings scale, sort of, that is an outcome over the last five years. And I'd also like to see the changes in participation in Better Beginnings over, say, the last five years, understanding that participation has gone down recently. So, I'd like to sort of look at some trends, and, you know, in particular, these, these are very large contracts, and they are very effective in many ways. And so, this is a chance for these, those that are the recipients of these grants to kind of brag on what they do and the work that goes into it, and give us a chance to reevaluate some of these contracts. If they're, if some are outliers one way or the other, we're going to better understand that. So, I look forward to those reports, May 30th, 30th, if that sounds reasonable, so that we can...
And then it will be pulled, put on our action agenda for next month?
Yes, exactly. Thanks.
I actually also had questions about HIPAA, and would love to hear a little bit more about what those funds look like. This isn't, these are agenda items that have long been, these funds have had to be approved by our board, but this is the first time that your agency sits in here and says, well, I guess last year, but anyways. I, I think that, that we can take a little bit more time to dig into that. I would like to get a greater understanding of why the amount per pupil goes for HIPAA, what that looks like, and any evaluations of that program. Any other questions on action, on the consent agenda items four and five? Are there any other questions on other consent agenda items?
So, I'd like to pull consent item number six. It's a PLSB case for Steven Shook.
Mm-hmm.
Like to review the transcript of the evidentiary hearing and understand a little bit more about that situation.
Okay. Ms., okay, Ms. James, may we ask, may I ask, if this is pulled, does this go on the action agenda item next month?
Yes, ma'am. We would make every attempt to get it on the June action agenda.
Okay.
Unless there's some delay in obtaining the evidentiary hearing transcript.
Okay, and would we have a hearing with the educator or...
It would be a review, and the educator would be given the opportunity to come and speak to you.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
And at that important a time, our board can decide?
What the final decision on the case will be, yes, ma'am.
Okay.
One, I have a question for you as well, and some of these, this isn't an item to pull, but I noticed more so in these cases than in the past months, that there were at least two occasions when there was substantial harm to student, and DHS found the claim to be unsubstantiated. That is of concern to me, and I know that's not you.
Yes.
But I needed to just say that. There was another instance where one of the report, it, it, nothing on DHS was cited, so I'm concerned, was it even reported to DHS? So, I don't know what to do about that, but I'm glad that this board and those serving in the board are, you know, these are, in, in one case, DHS found that it was an unsubstantiated claim, but the defendant pled guilty to a misdemeanor assault. So, if that isn't an abuse claim, what on earth does it take to, to, for that to become of concern to DHS? So, I just needed to say that. That was unsettling.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am. Thank you for making that comment. Sometimes, sometimes we don't know. And because it is another agency, you know, I, I'm not very sure, but we do try to ask on every case, what the outcome, whether it was reported to DHS and what the outcome was, because we know that you all are interested in that information.
But I do think, and having seen cases over the years, we have a very different lens as how we approach things, and, and that we are, you know, charged with deciding, can this person be in front of students again? Should they be in front of students again? And so, as we think about what PLSB recommends, where we sit, we have to, it's a heavy decision, but one that we, we have to really think about, no matter what they have found.
Well, and I'm less familiar with the lens that DHS looks through, but I understand there in the business of protecting children, and if you're not seeing a misdemeanor assault as abuse, you know, when it was caused detrimental harm to the child, I'm just confused on to what their lens is, so thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Would it be appropriate for us to ask DHS how, how they come to those decisions? Maybe not individualized, you know, case by case. I could potentially see an issue there, but more, what is their broader policy with regard to criminal convictions and, and what, what is their standard for determining maltreatment?
Yeah, I think certainly as staff, we can reach out to our sister agency and try to get some information and maybe put something together for you to try to explain their process. Obviously, they're not under our umbrella per se, so, I mean, we could certainly invite them to speak to you if you would like that. I don't know that we can force them to come.
Yeah.
But, but yeah, we, we'll certainly reach out to our sister agency, try to get some information about how they're reaching their decisions on whether there is child maltreatment findings, and then how that's getting to us for purposes of PLSB.
Well, my guess is, I'm not, I'm getting a tiny glimpse of the picture, and so, I wanted to be clear on that I'm making a lot of assumptions here. And so, hearing from them would be very helpful in balancing my understanding, so thank you.
Absolutely. Yeah, I'll reach out to them.
Yeah.
I will give a comment that this has been a longstanding issue, at least as long as I've been on the board, between the DHS cases that we get and PLSB. I know that, I think Carly and her team have worked a lot to try and make a better partnership, but just so you know, Jeff and Lee, this has been a longstanding issue.
Well, as a local, former local school board member, I can also say that, that there are issues honestly the other way as well, when what seems to be very minor things create a maltreatment registry indication, and that individual, a decade later, trying to get a minor thing removed so that they can continue employment, has proven to be onerous at times. So, you know, DHS is very likely in a very difficult position, getting, getting frustrating complaints in both directions. But nonetheless, it would be, I think, beneficial to understand their process and, and thinking for how they get to that, to better inform us when we are considering the PLSB's decisions.
With that, is there any other cases that board members would like to ask for their questions on or here in an additional month? I share the same concern about item number six, so I'm glad that that has been pulled. Any other, we have a number of charter authorizing panel decisions or anything else. It's a robust consent agenda. Any other questions on the consent agenda? Ms. Rollins, Ms. Woods? Okay, so the floor will be open for a motion to approve the consent agenda with three items pulled. Is that, is there a particular, we need to phrase that?
I'll probably take a formal motion to pull the items first, and then approve the remainder of the consent agenda after that.
Okay. So, floor is open for a motion to pull the items out of the consent agenda.
What I, what was your number, item number six? Six, okay, so I make a motion that we pull items four, five, and six from the consent agenda, and to move them to...
Action agenda for a future month.
Action agenda for June. Is that correct?
Okay.
He's like, it's fine.
There's a motion by Ms. Keener, is there a second?
Second.
A second by Ms. Hunter. Any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Now, floor is open for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So, I'll make a motion to approve the remaining consent agenda items.
Motion by Ms. Keener, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Bragg. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Let's go ahead and take a break here, and then we'll come back to do reports. Should give us 10 minutes?
Yeah.
Yeah, 11:15, we'll start back on reports. Thank you all. Thank you all.[388.37]
Let's go ahead and get back started. We are on the report section and we have reports from a number of school districts.
Yeah, so we have quarterly, we put reports on all of our districts that are under state authority for you guys to preview. So you see the quarterly reports that were required. Sheila is here if you have any specific questions. If not, that is just for your information. We do though have Watson Chapel here today to do a presentation and give you an update on where they are after last month's meeting. And as a request by this board to come. So Mr. Wilson is here with, I believe, four members, four board members? Four board members and they have a presentation. So I will refer to you to see if there's any questions over the quarterly reports from Sheila or if you guys want to go ahead and move to Watson Chapel.
Yeah, let's go with the first four. Earl, Helena, West Helena, Lee County, and Marble Lane. Are there questions on those four reports? Mr. Henderson, Mr. Bragg. Ms. Rollins and Ms. Woods, questions on the first four school districts?
No, thank you.
I would like to hear from Marble Lane, maybe sometime over the summer.
Yeah, I think that's a great.
How the first year went, get some updates. They mentioned hiring some interventionists. I would like to hear what's that looking like? Enrollment numbers and personnel for the upcoming school year.
Okay. And we, you know, we have organized like, so Dr. Stone has been here before and done a full report for you. Dr. McGee has been here for Helena, West Helena. So maybe this summer we can get Marble Lane and then possibly Earl.
Because Mr. Burgess has not been in front of our boards since he's been superintendent.
Superintendent, correct. He's been in front of you as OCSS staff, but not necessarily as superintendent.
Questions, board members, Ms. Hunter? Okay, so we will go on to the Watson Chapel. Or Pine Bluffs, I didn't say Pine Bluff, but Pine Bluff can be included in that.
Yeah, so, yeah, once you release a district from state authority, there is still a requirement for a year after being released that they are providing quarterly reports.
Any questions on Pine Bluff?
I just wanted to give a shout out to Sheila and her team. These are really good reports and I really appreciate the work that you and your team does to put them together.
I was gonna say, I would like to maybe, so Pine Bluff, will they do another quarterly report?
Yes, they'll have one more.
Okay, I would like to see some student data.
Student data, yes.
Maybe interim testing data. I appreciate that others did that. Okay. Okay, so we are on Watson Chapel School District.
All right, so I'm going to turn it over to Watson Chapel.
It was good to see Ken James while ago and we started out kinda together here a long time ago. It's a pleasure for me to be here today before the State Board, Commissioner, Assistant Commissioner, and all the teams out here. You know, we're very pleased at the progress we're making at Watson Chapel right now. Many of my school board members are here to support me today and answer questions if necessary. You know, we've been on quite a journey during this year. It started out headache, probation, and now we're moving totally forward. We feel good about everything we're doing. We're trying to improve our schools and of course meet the needs of our students. We want to put our students first and definitely have a plan in place. And that was the key. That really got attention at the last State Board meeting. We have been accepting proposals to improve our schools and to move our district forward. It's a very comprehensive plan that we're looking at that will help improve our deficiencies in our six systems of operation that have been identified by Ms. Whitlow's State Department team. And I really appreciate all of them, Ms. Whitlow, everybody for helping us. Like I said, my board administration, teachers, and staff are committed to providing the students in our community the best education possible and we definitely want to be student focused. Sometimes budgets gets in the way of that, but we're gonna rearrange, we're gonna reorganize, we're gonna restructure and do whatever we have to do to meet the needs of our students and be student focused. We're in the process right now restructuring administrative staff in our schools to ensure safety, rules and regulations and policies are followed to the T. We've got to do that. We still have a few hiccups along the way, but we're taking care of those hiccups. And at this time, of course, I was gonna see if Ms. Davis would like to talk a little bit about the plan we have in place or if there's any other questions. I didn't know, Ms. Whitlow, how we're gonna do that today. Is that okay? Okay. You got any other questions?
Board members, questions? Ms. Woods, Ms. Rollins?
Okay. I think they have a copy of the plan.
They do. Good morning slash afternoon. Dee Davis, Watson Chapel Assistant Superintendent. We do have a plan which you have a copy of and is pictured depicted on the screen. I wanted to start with just a brief timeline. When I arrived there in July and we started reviewing some of the things that, you know, would just seem normal, like your instructional minutes, your master schedules, things like that. I noted that there were some serious concerns with transcripts, things like that, of that nature. We quickly got to work on correcting those and as you might guess, those are symptoms of larger problems, larger areas of need. And so one thing kind of led to another. Education, those systems are cyclical. It's not a fix it, check a box and that's done. You have to then work to prevent that from happening again. So we started working, realized that I needed some instructional leadership support in February. We were able to have some conversations with Bailey Group, ran into Dr. Ivy Pfeffer. By coincidence, started talking to her. We often provide a lot of training and support for teachers in the classroom, but we rarely ever provide support for leaders. And you can only be as good as your leader. And so knew that we needed to provide that instructional leadership for our leaders. We have some veteran leaders who were sort of well on their way, but some brand new leaders who were in a very different place. Needed that to be customized for them so that they got what they needed just so they could enhance their craft and their leadership. So we started having some conversations in February, contracted with the Bailey Education Group, of which Dr. Pfeffer leads, and realized that the three main things we looked at was the organization and management, the organizational systems and safety. That was a huge concern. And then just the management of human capital. How, what, who are our resources and how are we using them? Are we using them effectively? Quickly realized when that got started that, hey, we don't have enough days. I need someone in here with these leaders at least once a week. So went back to the superintendent and to the board and requested an additional five days for each campus and received that. And so they are actually there today as we are here and we're winding down those visits. In April, we started, early April, we started, before we met with you all the last time. In early April, we already started talking, we had already started talking about how do we continue this support? I don't want, this has been really productive and really good for them. I don't want to leave this leadership support. You don't get better or you don't learn all that you need to learn in a few months. So I wanted to continue that leadership support. So we started talking about what does this summer look like? Everybody thinks that when kids go home, oh, we can settle down, but that's when the work really begins for the upcoming school year. So I wanted to continue that work into the summer planning so that day one, you enter school ready to move forward. And so we had already started having those conversations. April 23rd, we met with the OCSS team. Ms. Whitlow and her team came and sat down with Mr. Wilson and I sort of provided a summary of the support they had given thus far. Went through each of the six systems of operation, talked about some concerns they still had and made some recommendations, many of which we had already noticed and started addressing and or talking about how we need to address those upcoming. So in April, after we, several days after we had met with the OCSS team, we had a special called School Board Meeting. We provided the school board with where, with the statuses. Where, what's the current reality? Gave them some options, three options for the district response because the district must respond. Gave them some options and talked about a continued conversation with the Bailey Education Group to then make that plan that we were talking about more comprehensive, to include those six systems. We also reached out to several other companies who provide that same sort of service so that we were complying with the law and with our district policy. I'm currently waiting, Bailey Education Group already, has already done one of those proposals, has presented to our school board. I'm currently waiting on one from a second consulting company and haven't heard back from the others, but still open until Monday for those conversations. District leadership did hear, district leadership and the school board did hear from Bailey Education, from a variety of entities. You have a handout that I believe, these are some of the conversations. Just to kind of give you a brief look into the systems that we talked about. Talking about coming, starting with a serious, intensive review of those systems, needs assessments, what's really going on in all of those? Having those audits, comprehensive audits. So we talked about that. We went through, when you, when you're going to write a plan, I believe, in that backward design model. And so we started with, well, what is it, we're actually, what's our goal here? For each one of these systems, what does success look like? So we created some theory of action statements. If we do this, then this is what we expect to happen. Those then guide the conversations and the work that you then move forward to plan the actions. And so we started gathering that data. So you sort of see our brainstorming on the right with how we brainstormed through those theory of action statements and some things that we thought were important. We are here today to present what we think to you is a comprehensive plan. The details still, of course, need to be fleshed out based on the consulting company that we, that the board does select to move forward with. However, we are confident that we do have a good plan in place for that moving forward and all we have to do is to flesh out those details to do that. I did want to just mention back again to you, which you are familiar with, the current work with the leadership focusing on those three foundational pieces, the organization and management, the managing the systems and the safety and that human capital. Because that is one area, you have to have, use your resources efficiently and effectively. And you have to have the resources in place. Just a reminder to you of those six systems, which you are, I'm sure, already well familiar with, but a lot of times schools aren't really familiar with those. The whole, the district as a whole, we are making them more familiar with what really are the six systems. You know, if I'm a teacher, all I think about is academics. If I'm in the business office, all I think about is the money. But if one's not functioning, the other is not functioning. To look at our plan for a comprehensive support, that district review, we were, this is our initial thinking, approximately 14 days to do that district audit of all six of those systems and then to have those conversations afterwards with the needs assessment. District and building leadership coaching, as I mentioned to you earlier, I didn't want to give that up. I want someone in there with those principals and assistant principals at least once a week, helping them to improve their craft and making sure they are the best instructional leader they can be. So that's 100, approximately 175 days throughout the school year. Job embedded side by side. Teacher coaching, teacher professional development with the leadership right there beside them as well. Leadership has to know what's going on in their classrooms. We have to observe that tier one instruction. If tier one instruction isn't working, it doesn't really matter how many interventions you have or how intensive they are if your core is not right. Special education services, want to make sure those, the students are getting the needs, their needs met and that we are meeting those needs appropriately and effectively. So 25 days there. MTSS services, we often think about RTI as academic only, but it's not. It's academic and behavioral. Those two things go hand in hand. So we want to make sure we are supporting and teaching how that looks, how that works and how that works together. School counseling program, that's really important to have, that you have a comprehensive counseling plan and that the plan is being worked. You have a plan and that you're working the plan. And then continuous partnership and progress monitoring and evaluation. You have to progress monitor ongoing. If you're not inspecting what you're expecting, it's probably not gonna happen. You then have to take that data and say, okay, is what we're doing working or is it not? If it's not working, why? And what do we, what decisions do we need to make forward? If it is working, you don't want to break something that's working. We often get so many things on our plate that we don't progress monitor and that we don't go back and look at and then we don't know what's working and what's not. So we must go back and look at what, what, what we're, what is working well, what is not? What do we need to do differently? What do we need to keep doing? So that's kind of just an overview. That would be ongoing. That's just an overview of the comprehensive, how we have started building that comprehensive plan, the number of days that we are requesting on your handout. You will also see another breakdown of those number of days. It's on here on the slideshow briefly, but you have it on that handout more fleshed out. So now it's a matter of really working through the actual, the exact actions, the dates of how those day, number of days look. When will they be? When will they start? When will they end? That sort of thing. So those dates, you, we kind of have to wait until we sign a contract with a consulting company to, no, to start picking dates. So, any questions?
Board member questions?
Monday night, hopefully we'll have any other proposal in, but we hope, we hope to go ahead and prove this Monday night at our regular board meeting. And we sure like to have the good graces of the State Board in doing all this because we're totally restructuring our school district. It's for the best. We've had DNF schools for the past eight or 10 years, I believe. It's time change, that's what we're trying to do.
I'm sorry, Mr. Wilson, could you repeat what you just, you're totally restructuring what? I didn't hear you.
We're restructuring our school just about. We got a lot of new employees coming in. We've had a lot of retirements. We gotta replace some important positions. And I tell you, it's gonna make everything so much better. I can see it now. And in the interview process, we are really stressing what we need and what the responsibilities and accountability is gonna be for a lot of positions.
Well, so, okay. So last month, we talked a little bit about the fact that you had not gotten any, or you were slow to receive back any kind of commitments from your teachers? And that you had some concerns about that? And then we talked about the morale of the teachers. So can you give me an update on that? It sounds like your things are turning.
We're trying still to get some resignations. We know some people have been hired by other districts. But their, their reaction is that their contract's still good to June 30th. And that's what they say. And, you know, I, we're waiting on a few of those. But I believe this, I believe we're getting the staff we need to really improve our school district and move forward. And the morale, hey, we're gonna, we're gonna increase our morale. I think it had to do with what had gone on in the past and same old, same old. We can't do the same old, same old, we're gonna get the same result. So changes are gonna be for the best. And I think the morale's gonna pick up. We've hired several new key people that I know are gonna bring back the Wildcat pride. That's what we have.
So I, I guess I'm just struggling to understand a little bit. If you've not received the resignations and you've not.
It's hard to replace.
I know, but then I hear you say that you have found suitable and.
We've, we've had a lot. We've found some good people to come in and we've interviewed some key positions such as in administration to help us out. And I feel like that's gonna be a real key to leadership. We gotta have a leadership at each school. Hey, we wanna, we wanna move our grades up from F's to D's and then D's to C. We're only three points from a C at Coleman Elementary right now. So we feel like we can get up there, but it's gonna take people. And you know how it is, you're only as good as your people are. And that's one reason why we're interviewing. We're stressing accountability and what we expect. We want every position evaluated. We want to make sure we're doing everything we can to focus on our kids, increase test scores and, and, and give quality school to Watson Chapel. And move into our new school when it's finished with a different attitude, a different culture, and have those kids prepared. And that's what we're trying to do.
I'm excited about the audit and overhaul. I think that's the, the correct approach. I'm wondering about, having been a teacher in a school and understanding how a lot of movement can happen in the springtime. It often ends with lots of rumors of where people are going and there's a lot of talking going on. And I'm thinking about the teachers that have yet to resign. I'm so sorry about, that have yet to resign. And I'm wondering what the narrative is in the schools. Are they fearful, are they just trying to stick it to you till the last minute to put you in a bad spot? Or is it that they're feel, fearful of something happening to them or their future position?
I actually think some are, are just being, I guess, getting revenge back or whatever you want to call it by waiting. I wish, you know, next year, we're, we're gonna do it a lot earlier on the intent form. We're gonna stress it. I hope we can present a school that everybody wants to stay in. You know, we want to increase the morale. We want to have everybody happy to be at your job, you know? Everybody doing their job. I said this first time I came in, everybody does their job. We don't have any problem, you know? And that's what we want. We want to get dependable people in. We've had some great people, some greater, some great teachers and coaches just retired from us, you know, and left us, so we're replacing them. And with a lot of young people that have a desire and I believe they're gonna really increase the pride back in Watson Chapel. And that's what we gotta have. And with this plan we got in place, I think they're gonna all receive the training they need. I think that's very important. And teachers on 1240 will receive intense training. And we've got to teach standards. We've got to raise the test scores. We also want to enjoy school. Kids ought to enjoy school. I enjoyed my life at Watson Chapel when I went in first through 12th. And I want every student to be able to do that.
Well, we spoke last time about putting sort of an end date on those letters of intent that you have until, say, X date to sign them. And if it's not signed, we assume you're not coming back. And at that point, I think it's last month, you didn't have an end date on those letters of intent. Have you implemented that?
All right, what we did, in February, we did the first intent form and we didn't get half of them back. I sent out another email on the intent forms had to be back or else we would assume that you would not be coming back. Well, I got in probably 15 or 20 more, but there's still several out there that hadn't responded and, you know, we're, we're kind of holding the bag until we make sure we got that resignation. We wouldn't want to over hire and that's another thing we're doing is on our finances, you know, our budgets and everything. We've got to be responsible. We've got to really look at that. We want to definitely make sure our salary schedules are in order. We've got some problems with a few, but we are gonna work on those during the year. We're gonna have them in order for next year. And probably new schedule next year. So we're excited about getting, getting everything where it should be. We've been operating as a large school for too many years. You know, we've lost from 3,500 down to about 1,700 and 86, I believe is what it is. So you can see, we've got to do something and we're gonna do it. We just gotta operate at a smaller school level and make sure we're getting our bang for our bucks with our budget. And we want to be student focused. That's the key.
May I ask on these lines, are your principals returning for each school? Are you hiring new principals?
All right. We did get a resignation from one principal. We have transferred assistant principals to different schools to help out. And I think that's gonna be a really good thing for Watson Chapel to do.
Okay, and I know that y'all are under building construction. Are there any movement in school buildings for this upcoming school year?
On what?
Any movement and changes in school buildings for this upcoming school year?
Not this upcoming year. It's gonna take two years to complete the construction. You know, we are upgrading buildings that need it, but we don't want to spend any unnecessary money. But we want to be safe. We have cameras in every building. And, you know, when we move into a new building, that's gonna create a lot of space for those sixth, seventh, eighth graders over at the old high school. They're gonna have a tremendous amount of space. And the old school they're in right now, you know, in two years, hey, they'll be ready and I'll be ready for them to get in the new school, or their new school.
Board members, questions? I have some questions. So in this slide, it talks about you currently do have Bailey coaches?
Correct. They are, they are currently working with the instructional leadership. So those building principals and assistant principals.
So in the request that you have outstanding, I mean, this, you would at least envision continuing that?
Oh, yes, I, yes.
I mean, that's part of the plan.
Continuing it, but extending it to be more and deeper.
Okay, all right. So how do you feel the current, like, the current level of coaching? How is the leadership accepting that? Do they want more? Are they resisting it? What's your assessment?
Over the course of my career, working through the co-op and then two other districts who have been under state authority, I've seen a lot of consulting companies come and go. This is a group I've been quite impressed with. They, they briefed with me upfront. They are doing what I'm asking. It's, it's really a consensus. We talk before, during, and after their visits. I'm there for part of the time. I don't stay the whole time because I want leaders to be able to be vulnerable and learn from those coaches and trust those coaches. The reports they give are very detailed, very honest. They give areas for concern, but they also give, here's where we're seeing evidence of change. Here's next steps and here's when I'll be back again. They give a summary of what they've done and then I then forward those to Mr. Wilson and to Ms. Whitlow. They come within 24 hours of every visit. So I've been quite impressed with that because I've worked with other companies who it's sometimes days and weeks before you ever get a report back and it's too late. That's too late to address anything that might have happened. But they are hands-on, in the work. I've been quite impressed with their, with what they, with what they do. And I'm one that would, I would say, I would say.
So I'm happy that, that the consultants are doing work. But how are, I mean, so how do you?
With, they're doing with, yes. No, they don't do it.
No, 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 but they're, I mean, they're doing their job, right?
Oh, sure, sure. Oh, sure, sure.
But, I mean, so from the leadership standpoint, they're all, do they like, oh, today's the day. I'm gonna get some more feedback. I'm excited that I'm gonna grow personally. Or are they like?
So I will tell you that I spent a little bit of time prior to them coming, building that up, letting them, being transparent with them, saying, these people are coming. I've met with them, I trust them, I feel like they will really be helpful. I feel like you'll really like them, that you will benefit. I stress to them, this is about what you need. Tell them what you need. They came in the first time and that's all they did was spend time with that leader, ask it, looking at things, reviewing things and saying, what is it that you feel like you need? And so they've real, they've listened. It's very different at every campus because every leader is very different. Some are farther along than others. And so they get what they need, but it is relevant to their job. I've been impressed. That's, one of the other things on the reports are the preparation. So they will always have like, for example, the principal. So they will always have like, for example, the principal was prepared with questions to ask. So they prepare beforehand, okay, when, when the Bailey lady, we call her the Bailey lady. When the Bailey lady gets here, these are the questions I have. Or here's the needs that, here's where I wanna go next. And then they manipulate through that. So yes, I've been impressed. Ms. Hunter, if I could add, and board, if I could add just a couple of other things, just that I've made notes of that we do talk about every time we come here, I just wanna add, as of yesterday, current enrollment was sixteen sixty-seven. Um, based on the documentation that was provided to me, we did receive one hundred and forty-nine intent forms back. We do have roughly two hundred and fifty employees. I do not know what date those were sent out, um, or what the, or what the um, deadline, if there one was given. I, I don't, I don't have that information. Uh, I know the, the other lady, Ms. Woods, is it Ms. Woods? And you are always interested in the dyslexia part, so I just wanted to let you know about that. We have placed twenty-two new students in services for dyslexia this school year. Have eight um, that have been placed to begin in the fall with about ten more packets for screening um, that need to still be done. The, my, my dyslexia coordinator did tell me that she wanted y'all to be aware that she does have, even though there is no set rule necessarily for number of days, she does try to follow the sped rules. So she tries to have thirty-day, a thirty-day turnaround from the time that packet goes home to give parent permission to screen to when she has a placement conference with those parents. So I know that's information that you all have been interested in. And we have received eight um, exit surveys from those that, once we created that, cause you, when we first came to you, there was no process for um, talking to, having an exit interview of any kind. Um, I will say compensation is, has been one of the reasons. Safety has been another and then just needing support. You have to remember, we're in a, a county where there are two other larger school districts within five minutes. Not fifteen or twenty minutes, but with literally within five minutes down the road. And when you have a much larger school district, it's, it's quite difficult and challenging to be competitive with those salaries, which is another reason for those salary schedules to be reviewed um, because we need to right-size some of those things. So I just, I wanted to give you all those facts since it's things we talk about ongoing.
And I appreciate that so much. And just, I wanna say I appreciate you and your willingness to come up here and be transparent and be vulnerable because you know, the things that we spoke about with dyslexia, um, it brought to some other things to light and some assumptions maybe from other school districts. And I hope that your students and your families are able to see themselves in the new rules that we approved just today because um, these conversations are gonna lead to better outcomes. So I appreciate you. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I just wanna verify one thing.
Sure.
Did you say that there's roughly a hundred teaching positions that you've not heard back on the?
Those, those are those intent forms.
Intent forms, right.
That we did not hear back from, that's correct. No, the hundreds, I'm sorry.
One hun-
The hundred, what, we've received one hundred and forty-nine intent forms, so.
But you sent out how many?
Oh, oh, yes, yes, yes.
But you sent out two fifty?
I did not send them out. So I'm assuming they were sent to the whole district, yes, to all employees. Now, there could be some um, that, that's a, what I, my data comes from a spreadsheet. For those that filled it out digitally, there are people like cafeteria workers and custodians who may have filled that, theirs out on paper. And the business manager would have those. I don't, I don't know an, an exact amount of how many of those would be.
Okay.
I'm gonna say roughly a hu, a hundred, probably a hundred and fifty. So we probably, you're talking about, cause the others would be custodians.
Okay. All right, that was kind of.
Yeah, I think, I think.
Shocking.
Yes, but you employ, every, all employees get them, yes. Cause you have to.
All employees have gotten the intent to?
Correct, because we have to, yes, correct. We do that for all employees because you have to know how many custodians you may, may or may not be keeping or cafeteria workers, all those little things, you know, make for a smooth building to run properly, so. And a lot of times they don't, they, while they have school email, they may not have access to a computer or not really fluent in using a computer and they'll come and wanna do paper forms and we, they, they do have a paper form. Those are housed in the business manager's office, so I don't know exactly how many that would be.
Ms. Davis, I appreciate the details. Uh, mind uh, elaborating a little bit on the school counseling program with regards to um, the college and career readiness, uh, what that looks like?
Um, we have, we have, I believe it is three pathways currently that are the high demand, high wage um, currently in place. We um, have several avenues, including the introduction to education, the, the rising educator um, program, welding, working still on that, of how that's gonna look and how we're gonna partner with that. I know they have met with Central Maloney, who they have been partnering with. So those are all in the master schedule, all three levels. Um, and so we, we, we do have that in place. Now, Mr. Wilson may can talk more about the welding and the auto mechanics, um, those two pieces. But we have those programs and we have completer courses, so they, they're all three levels are there.
Wait, can I jump in? So you just have three career pathways for students?
No, 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 um, we have multiple career pathways. Those, I'm just telling you that we have, you know, like you're, I just mentioned the, including the rising educator. So just, it includes that one, the family and consumer sciences, um, business management, those. There are, we have multiple, yes.
Okay, sorry.
Sorry, I wasn't clear. Okay, sorry, I wasn't clear.
Thank you.
Okay, so I appreciate you all coming in. I know you have some school board members that have attended and wanted to open up the floor if any of you would like to make remarks um, for us. Not to put you on the spot, but wanna have, wanna have the microphone open for you all.
Do I need to step aside?
No, I just wanna make sure I forgot to introduce. Also have my special ed supervisor here also, if you have any question.
It's almost afternoon, but I'll make it a good morning. My name is Alan Fraser. I've served the Watson Chapel School Board for nine years now. Uh, there are a couple of you on this board that I've known for several years and I appreciate all of your service here. Uh, so I don't know if I can offer very much more as far as a different perspective, but I just want to, first of all, apologize to this body for me and some of my other peers not attending uh, these board meetings this year, uh, either by Zoom or here in person. But it's uh, very good to be here. I've got pages and notes of all the things that I've learned. Uh, some of the awards early this morning were some people that I knew that had pine bluff fruits. Uh, Miss, Miss Post, as a matter of fact. So that was, that was pretty awesome day. Um, and some of the things that I was gonna mention have already been spoken, but uh, I wanted to share with you very, very quickly my why. My why are my thirty-four-year-old, my thirty-one-year-old and my twenty-four-year-old sons. They all graduated from Watson Chapel. They all uh, went on to college and they earned their degrees. None of those sons of mine, they're knuckleheads sometimes, but they uh, did not have to go to college and take any remedial courses or anything like that. I also have a business. I'm with Edward Jones Investments and my branch is right across the school from where the new construction's gonna be. You can just almost see around the corner there. So uh, not only, you know, my, my why is part of the community. We love our children. We want them to do well. And when they get out of school and they turn the tassel and they go to their next stage in life, we want them to be ready, whether it's going into the military or going to work or going to college or taking up a VOTAC, we want our students to be ready. So as a school board member, uh, that is my why. And uh, so I hope that you uh, appreciate that. And I, I really like the way that we're going. So I wanna just comment, uh, Mr. Tom Wilson has been working his backside off and I don't really, how else to say it? Sometimes I can just shuck it on down to the cob. He loves Watson Chapel and he's giving it all he's got. And I've tried to be a very good supporter and tried to help him along the way. Uh, the school board is a very coherent group, a very competent directors. And I think that needs to be on the record today, that we work hard, that we make tough decisions for what it's worth, uh, before we ring the gavel and go into a session. Uh, we say a prayer and pledge because we love our school and our God and our country. And we, we are looking, you know, we're optimistic about the future. Uh, we are not just looking through everything with rose-colored glasses. We know that we have a lot of work to do, that we appreciate your support, that we appreciate your partnership and uh, help us get the train back on the tracks and heading down the road uh, for Jefferson. Jefferson County, southeast Arkansas, needs Watson Chapel to be a vibrant school district. And I really do believe in a, a very, very strong, vibrant uh, school district for Jefferson County. If you went back and looked at some data, starting from the mid-eighties all the way up to now, that there's been a decline in population and we, but we're not giving up hope. We believe that we can turn the corner and, and move forward and we can see some growth in the community. So I kinda made a big circle. I didn't mean to speak so long, but I got on a tangent there. But I'd be glad to answer any questions to the best of I could as a school board member.
We appreciate you coming in today. Thank you so much. Board members' questions?
I'm gonna ask you a hard one, okay?
You guys tough questions, too good.
I have a reputation, I guess. A year ago, things were not in good shape at Watson Chapel. What, what has, we, we've been very involved with school administrators um, since, I don't know, August or September, I suppose of this year. What, what have you all as board members done to change your oversight of the district to ensure that the changes that are being made are more permanent and lasting? And we don't find ourselves back in the same situation?
You, you do ask good questions and that's another one. So um, there are specific things that school board members do, but there are certain things that we're not supposed to do. In other words, I stay in my lane. I want to be supportive, uh, but uh, I don't micromanage and, and try to dictate what the superintendent and the assistant try to do. But we do, do our jobs as far as the hiring and the budget, budgeting. Uh, we attend the school board meetings and we listen to all the presentations and we place our votes there. But uh, it's a good question that you asked because the school board and the administration were completely caught off-guard uh, this, at the beginning of the fall semester when we found out that there were serious issues with the scheduling. Yes, sir. So, and, and we tried, we, we actually, some parents reported and then we self-reported. And then uh, some of your people came down and, and rolled up the sleeves and dug in and tried to help. And we really do appreciate that. Thank you. I'm sorry. But uh, anyway, I hope that answered the question.
I would, I would like to, you know, I hate to visit dark days, okay? But you know, there were also significant issues related to uh, whether, whether students were earning the proper credits for graduation. And that's very concerning. That, 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 you know, that's getting into deep core fundamental problems. I, I understand. I, I've been a former school board member.
Yes, sir.
I, I understand the lanes that, that we all try to stay in and whatever. Uh, I would, I would remind you though, that, that at the, at the end of the day, the community has trusted you and, and your colleagues have been elected to oversee. And, and you know, I don't think that we can rely on, well, we hired the superintendent and, and we were shocked that that happened. I, I hope that there is a energy amongst your board members to to take a, a, a more involved role. It doesn't have to be micromanaging, I, I would agree. It doesn't have to be dictator-type uh, situation. But to know and understand and, 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 and hold accountable daily, you know, almost daily, certainly monthly, but, but on a more day-to-day operations of, well, you know, do we know that the, that we have refined structures and, and our governance here is more solid? To protect the community, cause they're, they've entrusted you.
Yes, sir. We most certainly do. So uh, the short answer to that question is yes, we have addressed those issues. Most of them are personnel and they're handled in executive session. So the answer to that is yes. And then on a scale of one to ten, as far as Mr. Wilson and Ms. Davis's uh, communication to the board to let us know what changes have been made and what's been done, I would have to give him a ten. I, I don't, I mean, there's not any vagueness or ambiguity there as to what we're doing to try to get things on track. But it was, you know, it was a daunting task. It was a lot of work to do, but I, I was very complimentary of, of the administration's communication to the board members about what was going on and try to get down to the root cause and then try to fix things and then chart our way forward. Uh, there is a, was a retired uh, former counselor. Her name is Lois Chambliss. Uh, Lois uh, was willing to come back on a part-time basis to kinda help us with that and, and I think she's got maybe eleventh and twelfth graders. But uh, I recently heard some information that she's, that, that's pretty tight. So if that's, that's as specific as I can be. Hope I answered the question. You're a good question asker, I know that. She had to bring me water, yeah.
More questions, comments?
Well, I, I'm just, Mr. Fraser, thank you so much for coming. You and your peers, um, seeing you here with the administration is really, um, gives me a lot of hope and encouragement. Uh, as you know, I, I'm the one who was a little vocal last month about your absence and so I really appreciate you guys showing up and hope you'll be back uh, either virtually or in person uh, for future meetings.
You betcha. So thank you again for all that you do and it was a pleasure being here today. And like I said, I learned a lot and that's no joke. So thank you for all you do. Thanks for your time.
So um, first I wanna thank the board for being here as well and the leadership of the district to at least be vulnerable and have a conversation and say, we, we recognize there's some shortcomings or some pitfalls. We wanna work with this board. We're coming together with a plan of action, cause I think we've all been a little bit critical of what's the plan, right? So here's, here's the first step, is we, is we have a plan. We wanna implement it with fidelity and we're, and we're bringing in consultants to help us. But that's, that's a short-term plan. The, the, the board needs to work with the district for long-term sustainability. You shouldn't have to rely on an external operator or an outside provider to make sure that the six pillars that we're talking about are all moving in the right direction. And this isn't easy work by any means. This is very complicated and it, it takes a lot of commitment and passion. So I, I do wanna commend you from taking some of the conversations from the last meeting and working with our school, our student support team to say, we got some folks here that need some coaching. We need to build some capacity. We gotta put some different systems and structures in place. My encouragement to the board is at your board meetings, you look at the data and ask the tough questions. And sometimes it's easy to forget that there's a face behind every single one of these numbers and we need to have conversations about those faces. And if you keep your focus on implementing this plan with fidelity, working with your leadership, continuing to attract high-quality talent, you're gonna see movement. And I, and I feel confident in that. But as the governance structure of the board, it, I love to hear the fact that there is dialogue between administration and the board, cause most of the time, and I, and I've worked with a lot of districts that are high-performing and a lot of districts that are failing, the, the majority of the time, almost to a hundred percent certainty, when you have a district that's failing, there is a divide and a lack of communication between administration and the board. So to hear that that's not an issue here, I think is really encouraging and you should applaud and celebrate that. But if there is communication, make sure we're having the right communication and it's about moving the needle on specific data. And it's okay to ask leadership, oh, questions about the data and say, what is the strategy and what is the plan? And if the data's not moving, after you do a quarterly review, you need to ask, did you do what you said you were gonna do? And if you did, then maybe we need to focus on something else. And if you didn't, why not? And if we can start having those true, honest conversations, you're gonna see tremendous momentum moving forward and the whole community's gonna benefit for that. So um, having the courage, I think, from the board to be here and from leadership to be here and stand in front of our board is something that should be commended. You have our commitment as a state agency to help facilitate and keep this dialogue on. And, and we wanna make sure that you know that we are here to support you as well. And we wanna be a partner in this journey every step of the way.
Thank you. Board members, any additional comments or questions? Thank you, Secretary. Thank you, Watson Chapel, for being here today. Um, we appreciate you all and we'll continue to, however we can support. We appreciate you all and will continue to, however we can support you. And there's a lot of hard work coming and I know there's a big graduation coming soon for a lot of students and more in the future. Thank you. We will move along to board liaison reports. It looks like, Ms. Keener, would you like to provide an update on the Early Learning Committee? But are there any other board members that would like to?
Yeah, I'd like, I'd love for you guys to get to hear from Tanya on some of these. Good morning. I know we've been here for a bit. So, I'm Tanya Williams, Assistant Commissioner in the Office of Early Childhood. And Brandy Ishman on my team is here and I just wanna acknowledge all the work of Brandy and other team colleagues. This is a big federal program that we administer and it's complex and a lot of people don't know this. It combines several funding sources. I'm gonna try to keep it really high level and just talk about what it does and then the changes. And I also want to acknowledge Board Member Leigh Keener for all the work and passion that she brings to this, because she has really helped us start rethinking some of that as we transition under the Department of Ed. And I'm really proud of the work that I think we've accomplished over the last few months. So, the Childcare Development Block Grant is really our largest funding source in the Office of Early Childhood. And it sort of has at a high level, two things that it does, that it focuses on. On one side, there's a big focus, it's the smallest amount of money that we use, but it's focused on all early childhood. We license almost 2,000 facilities, that pays for that and the monitoring that has to be done with that. It also pays for the professional development and any provider in our licensed childcare world and families, parents can participate in that professional development. It also has a focus on specific income-based children and criteria that it serves. And that's the biggest portion of the money. It's about 125 million today. There is the possibility, we're told, through congressional measures. We haven't gotten a notice of award and my finance folks don't believe anything until they have that notice of award. But we're going to get about 10 million more dollars in the state for that. So, we'll be hopefully at 135 million as we go forward. The, the portion for children serves children who are our most vulnerable. So, families that are on temporary assistance to needy families, TANF or formerly welfare, that are really just getting into work probably, activities. And then working into more self-sufficiency. That's a pretty small bucket, but that is mandatory and required of the block grant. It also serves foster care children and children in protective services. So, that's another sort of chunk of money that we allocate and partner with the Division of Children and Family Services to make sure we cover foster care children in our state and for those families who are serving them that need to go to work and, and serve those children well. And then the biggest portion of that is discretionary for families who are working and are, and who meet low-income criteria, up to 85% of the state median income. So, that's the biggest portion of families that we serve. We have had a work requirement at 30 hours for several years. We changed it from 40 to 30. And I will tell you politically, at that time, that was very difficult. But one of the big changes we're proposing, and I'm really excited and I do give accolades to Ms. Keener, is changing that work requirement to 20. And I know some people, I've heard from a few comments like, oh my gosh, we're going to 20. But I believe we're hitting the 30. I believe there are employers that have reduced work hours or we have people in that low-income category that are really lower than 30, that we deny those families and they're really eligible and that we're really open the door, because I don't think we're serving all the low-income families that we could. It's been very stationary. We are currently serving 15,672 low-income families who are meeting that 30-hour work requirement or attending school full-time or some sort of combination. So, school can be, you know, a college, a traditional college, it can be technical, it can be a training program. So, that's pretty broad. But just to give you a sense of how many people who are currently on, we have the resources to do that. And I think when we open that up, we're gonna be able to serve some families that currently do not have access. So, that's a big change going from 30 to 20. And Brandy, I'm gonna ask you to come up and just talk about some other changes. I just have to acknowledge her work. I think that change to work hours is a big one. We're gonna do something called presumptive eligibility. So, families who submit an application that may be incomplete, maybe they don't have all the documentation, will get 90 days of childcare assistance. A lot of people who are coming in, they need the childcare assistance to go do the interview even. And so, this will help families that are in that transitional space. So, I think that's a big one. Brandy, I want it, I want you to share, because she's, she has worked so hard on this and has done it for several years. And I just feel like it's important to acknowledge team members and to bring them along and grow them as we talk about that, both in schools and in the agency, so.
Good afternoon, everyone. So, just wanna talk a little bit about the changes that we're proposing in this CCDF state plan. Tanya mentioned about the presumptuous eligibility and making sure that we're able to support families as they go out and look for work. Currently, if a person applied for childcare assistance and they were not meeting those eligibility criteria, those applications would be denied. So, this will break down some barriers and give more families access. We're looking to coordinate some eligibility, whereas we have families who add a new child. Say, they're out for maternity leave for a while and they need to add a new child. We're going to extend that eligibility timeframe so that those families, those children that are newly added to the household will get the same eligibility timeframe as the, the children who are currently on. In addition to that, we find that job search is a barrier for families as well. Our current job search allows a person who is currently on the program to access 90 days at a loss of job or they've completed their educational program. But we didn't allow that for families who were newly onto the program. We're now gonna make that change, that we're gonna allow that front-end job search for people who are newly coming into the program. We already talked about the work hour change. We're gonna make some changes to our eligibility criteria for those who are coming on. Every year, there's a change in the 85% median income. So, we're going to start implementing that yearly instead of every two years. There are a few more things that are required by the block grant that we need some system changes to be able to move forward in. So, we are actively working with IT to put those in place. But we will need to request a waiver from the feds to get that moving along until the IT change is in place.
Can I just add real quickly on those changes? That is about paying prospectively. So, I'm a parent or I paid for childcare and I paid on Monday, whether my children were going or not. We pay on the backside, so you serve children through the week and then we reimburse you for that. So, doing that pers- prospective payment to providers, that is one of the systems change that Brandy was mentioning. And I think that is really gonna help levelize for both paying parents and what the state reimburses programs to do. And then paying by enrollment, we currently pay based on attendance. And so, we're trying to find some balance to have accountability, but also acknowledge providers and allow them some flexibility with their budget. So, we haven't quite worked out all the details on that, but that is a new federal requirement that we're looking at implementing, would require an IT change in our system. And we're working actively, really on rebuilding that system now that we're at the department with the IT team here. So, Leigh, I don't know if there's anything that we've missed that you want us to highlight, so.
Yeah, well, I'm laughing at the discussion last time with the, the Watson Chapel folks about staying in your lane and I'm not very good at that. So, I appreciate your kind words. One of the big things that, the feedback that we've received about the work hours, you know, we, of course, we want people to work. I mean, that's a big piece of economic development. That's part of why we need childcare, so that folks can work. But we also understand that continuity of care is important for development. And so, when parents are, a situation changes and they need to find a new job, they still have that childcare and that child can stay in the same facility, which is phenomenal. And we also understand that a lot of industries have shifted the way they pay their employees because of additional requirements. They might put them at, say, 29.5 hours, so they don't have to offer certain benefits. Well, that also excludes their kids from services. And I want to look at this plan not as a benefit for parents, but as an essential service for children. In the same way, we don't require parents to work for their kids to go to K-12, because we know it's what's best for those kids. This is the same thing. This is not about, about that. And so, shifting that sort of dimmer down a little bit, you know, the Learns Act called for an evaluation of our current system. And that report found, that assessment found that there are 81,600 estimated kids in Arkansas that are economically disadvantaged, that do not have access to childcare. That's a huge number. We're hoping that this shift can capture some of those kids and those families. Another part of that is we're hoping that it will put a larger demand and require more access. So, we are allowing the CCDF funds to be used for startup funds for infants and toddlers. We know that that age group is in crisis already. Turning that dimmer down will open it up to more people. So, allowing providers to use these funds to support opening new classrooms is gonna be huge. So, I'm excited about those two. And let's, oh, I know, the other thing I was gonna mention is, you know, we had the, the privilege of going to our house little learners recently with the governor, Tanya and I went. And one of the things that we found is during presumptive eligibility, during those 90 days, when, or that time period between when they apply and when they're approved, that some providers like our house are floating those parents and eating that cost. Now, they're lucky to be able to do that. Most people cannot. So, this will be a benefit not only to families and kids, but also to those providers that have gone above and beyond. So, it's gonna be better for them and they're gonna be able to help more families, which is critical. So, I think if there's anything else, I think that's just about it. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Really do appreciate all your focus on this and helping us.
Do you have board members' questions? This is an area I don't know anything about until right now.
You will, you will.
Other than I know it's not important. For infants and, and early childcare. So, I appreciate y'all's work. I'm glad that we're all together, able to support you in this work.
As are we. Thank you.
Any other board reports before we get to Ms. Solon?
I'll give a little short one on the Committee on Accountability. After a, after a short lull, while we finalized the, the report on DNF schools, it, it, I've been given a preliminary draft of what that report would look like statewide now and working to bring that down just a little bit. It was over 1,000 pages long, touching every school and so trying to make that a little more workable. But, but I anticipate the, the work of that committee to, to ramp back up with some real meaningful stuff in the next months, so.
Well, thank you for working with the agency on that and looking at that.
What I think will be interesting, based on the work session yesterday with the new proposed accountability system, I'd love to run the same numbers from last year under the new system and compare the results so that we can see kind of, you know, I know it's almost apples to oranges, but if the, if the numbers are the same from the previous year, it'd be interesting to see how scores might change based on the changes we make, just so that we can better understand implications of our shifts.
Yeah.
So, that'll all happen through the standard setting process. We'll be able to duplicate those reports and as we start making those definitions, a lot of that's gonna be based on those equiper percentile linkings on the new data to the old data to look at those ranges. So, the, the group that's coming together for that has a very busy summer ahead of them, but we'll be, we'll be able to share that data as we move forward.
Ms. Solon?
Sure.
Best for last? They're not quite last.
Yeah.
Yay. It's hard to believe it's already May and so many districts are winding down the school year for '23, '24. So, this month has been a busy month and some of y'all joined me when we went to Skilled GSA Conference. And I want to highlight this because this was amazing. I had an amazing time. I was very impressed to see the industry skills of thousands of secondary and post-secondary students. Our students showcased their proficiency in trade, technical and skilled service occupations, including healthcare. And it was clear to see that they are committed to excellence in their chosen fields. And I was so impressed with their skills and their teachers who help support this work that they're doing. I was just amazed by it. I was fully, like, I just couldn't get over how many, the drones, the construction, seeing the secretary on the machine.
Doing my best.
Yes, doing your best. And then we see the student come by and gets it in like five seconds. Yeah, that was, it was awesome, so. Also, we recently had educator commitment signing day. So, Friday marked an unforgettable event at the Capitol, witnessing students' pleasure join the noblest profession, fill my heart with joy and pride. And it kind of set the stage for Teacher Appreciation Week. So, we love that we were able, I think one of my pictures, the transition, there it is. Putting the transition to, that our, so many of our pre-service teachers have committed to joining this profession and we just love that. And I love the fact that we highlighted, like we highlight our athletes and our students who commit to academics. We love that we highlight our students who are committed to education. Also, this year, I was thrilled to take the stage, well, actually I didn't stand on the stage. I walked around the room because I'm a teacher and I can't sit still. Thrilled to take the stage as the keynote speaker at this year's Educator Rising Conference. It was an incredible honor to share my passion for education and empower the next generation of educators. Seeing our students in action impressed me as they prepared to compete in various categories there. And I love being able to connect with them and offer some insight into the world of education and hopefully inspire them to continue their journey. Because these are high school students that are considering, you know, majoring in education at the next level and very impressed with their professionalism. And again, there are teachers who support them on this endeavor, so I love being able to do that. And then I actually went to my home district to celebrate educators with North Larat School District. So, they invited me to be their Mistress of Ceremonies for the 2024 Night of Honors. And it's this fabulous gala that honors and celebrates teaching and educational profession, professionals. And they entrusted me with the ceremony and they laughed at my teacher jokes. And so, this was a full-circle moment for me, because this was the night that started my A-Toy journey. So, this is where I won. So, two years later, I was able to come back as the Arkansas Teacher of the Year. So, I love that I was able to host. I got really good feedback. They said I was really, really good. So, I enjoyed that. Yeah, I was afraid of that, but I got good feedback. And I love being able to go to different schools around the state. So, I got a chance to visit Central High School and I had the most incredible experience there. So, one of my former co-teachers, Mrs. Cho, invited me to her classroom. And then she planned a day for me where I got to push into other classrooms of other teachers. And of course, I was greeted by Ms. Rousseau, who is a legend. She's the principal there. And then I saw some of my middle school students who are high school students there. And so, I just love being able to do that and then join her back in the classroom as her co-teacher. I flooded the room and immediately pushed into the lesson, so I love being able to do that. And then, of course, it is Teacher Appreciation Week. So, normally this is where I do an educator spotlight. So, I decided to spotlight all of the teachers of Arkansas this week, who have very early mornings, late nights, extracurricular activities, testing and all the things that they do and they manage to do it with such grace and pride and they continue to do it day after day. So, I just wanted to take this time to celebrate them and wish them a happy Teacher Appreciation Week. So, that's all I have for this month.
Hail to the old gold, hail to the black.
My husband was excited because he graduated from Central, so he was excited that I met. And I got some good stuff. I even have now, Principal Rousseau gave me a little ornament. Next cutout is so it can go on my Christmas tree.
I have one too.
So, I thought that was pleasant.
Well, thank you. I, it's hard to believe it is May and that next month will be your last meeting with us. So, we'll look forward to seeing you still after that, but look forward to that.
Yeah, I just can't believe how the school year has.
It's flown by.
Yeah.
But thank you for your service. I love hearing what's, what's going on with you and how you're really able to elevate the teaching profession. It's just so important. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Is that last but not least?
Sure, and I'll be brief and I wanna echo some of the sentiments for Capri to just take a minute to celebrate all of our educators and everybody out there and our educational family that are making a difference in the lives of our students. It, it is hard to believe that this is May and I know when I think of May, I think of proms and graduations and all the wonderful things that are happening in the school year and, and our agency is getting ready to ramp up for the summer and start preparing for the next school year. So, I just wanna remind everybody out there and all, all of our students, even though you're looking at the days and counting them down, to remember what Muhammad Ali said, that said, "Don't count the days, make the days count." Ali said, that said, "Don't count the days, make the days count." So I want to make sure we finish this year strong and enjoy our learning each and every single day. Thank you for good meeting.
Is there any public comment, or any, no public comment? Okay, any further business of the board? With that, we will adjourn then. Thank you. Just call Ms. Steve, me and our.